Good evening, everyone. Under the provisions of the Public Meetings Law of the State of Missouri, the Board must adopt by roll call vote an agenda that includes the time, date, place, and tentative agenda for the meeting. A copy of this notice and agenda for this meeting was posted on Monday, September 10th, 2018, at the administration's 8855 Dunn Road, Hazelwood, Missouri. At the same time, copies of the notice and agenda were mailed to the major radio and television stations, to three newspapers, to all municipalities, schools in the district, and posted on the district website. May I please get a recommendation to adopt the agenda as posted?
I still recommend second.
Connie?
Mr. Eber.
Hi.
Dr. Vermaat.
Hi.
Mrs. Fonder.
Aye.
Mr. Schibbel.
Aye.
Secretary of Defense, aye. Yes, Mrs. Halls here.
Aye.
And Dr. Graves.
Aye. All right, good evening, everyone. All right.
You want some pictures?
Oh, you don't want to go?
Yeah, right. All right, we will now have Dr. Tiffany Bass. Mr. Gerald and Dr. Crowley.
Good evening. The Board would like to recognize McClure and McClure North students who participated in the 2018 Umsil Bridge Program this past June. Participants include McClure students Brian Taysha Albretton, Israel Lovins, Ramal Ray, students, I'm sorry, if you guys are here, go ahead and come forward. Okay. Yeah, absolutely. Our students from McClure, Brian Taysha Albretton, Israel Lovins, Ramal Ray, and senior Kevin Neely. McClure North students include Nicholas Bush, Mariah Green, Thomas Hicks Jr., Anthony McCray, Evan Ogunti, Tyler Orr, Kennedy Smith, and seniors Ayana Beatty and Nia Sykes. The University of Missouri St. Louis Bridge Program equips high school students in grades nine through 12 with stimulating educational experiences, college planning, and social and professional competencies, critical for the success and matriculation to college. Since its inception in 1986, the Bridge Program has provided unique and comprehensive college access services to a diverse high school student and parent population. Students' participants benefit from math, science, and Richmond courses that support their current high school curricula. Additionally, students are exposed to effective strategies designed to enhance writing skills, communication skills, college and career exploration, and ACT prep. Congratulations to our students, and thank you, Dr. Crowley and Mr. Gerald, for being here to accept on their behalf.
Don't go far, Mr. Gerald.
We will now have Ms. Bass talk about McClure students that participated in the Missouri Boys State.
The Board would like to recognize McClure students Alfonso Martin and Jalen Walker Wright. They are student athletes unable to attend tonight. But they were selected to participate in Missouri Boys State this past June. Participants are selected based on their merit and ability. Missouri Boys State is an eight-day youth program held each June to teach Missouri high school students leadership in the workings of government sponsored by the American Legion. Missouri is one of the 49 states, all except Hawaii, with such a program for boys and a separate program for girls sponsored by the American Legion Auxiliary. The Missouri Boys State Program hosts approximately 960 students or citizens and more than 130 volunteer staff members for eight days on the University of Central Missouri campus in Warrensburg. During the week, the citizens of MBS create a fully functioning government modeled after the state of Missouri. Citizens are divided into 16 cities with two cities per county into two political parties, nationalists and federalists. Congratulations to Alfonso and Jalen, and thank you for representing McClure and the Ferguson Florissant School District at such a prestigious event.
We will now have Dr. Bland talk about McClure North Girls Track completes a successful season with the state championship.
Good evening. At this time, would Dr. Crowley and Mr. Kuznerik, the athletic director, come up? The Board would like to congratulate the McClure North Girls Track team for capping off a great track season at the state championship in Jefferson City this past May. So I'm going to call their names at this time? All right. Sophomore Michelle Owens placed first in the 100 meters hurdle. Michelle, please step forward. The four-by-100-meter relay team of Michelle Owens, sophomore Lauren Taylor, Lauren, step forward, okay. Sophomore Kyra Perry, junior Destiny Griffin, sophomore and alternate Kanaya Smith, sophomore, oh, and Mari Tate Jr. also placed first at state. Congratulations to our state champion stars. I'd also like to recognize their coach, Mr. Van Horn. Thank you.
We will now have Dr. Hazel recognizing one of my childhood friends.
Yes, Dr. Johnson, I'd like to invite you up. Walnut Grove sixth-grade teacher, you want to come this way? Walnut Grove sixth-grade teacher, Dr. Patrick Johnson, who is a role model at school and encourages students to stay fit, demonstrated his speed and skill on the track this summer. Dr. Johnson set a state record for 38-year-olds in the two-mile run on July 7th at Sweatfest Stafford with a time of 13 minutes and 16 seconds. In addition to setting the record, Dr. Johnson supported the Stratford School Foundation through his participation in this meet. Dr. Johnson went on to take first place in the 200-meter dash, 400-meter dash, 800-meter run, 1,500-meter run, and 3,000-meter run, as well as first in short and long hurdles. Dr. Johnson's seven first-place finishes qualifies him to compete in the State Games of America in Lynchford, Virginia next summer. Congratulations, Dr. Johnson. And his family is here this evening, so we'd also, if you want to stand, we want to recognize the accomplishments, his son and his wife.
If Mayor Tom Snyder would come forward, please. Let's give him a round of applause as he comes. So Mayor Snyder has been an advocate for Ferguson Florissants for many years, and since I've been here, he has been right there with us all the way, and he's retiring soon, but he's going to still be around to support us. So we have a resolution to honor him this evening. And also, before I read this, tomorrow is the town hall, and so we invite folks to come out and support Florissant tomorrow at the town hall meeting. But Mayor Snyder, we want to present you with this resolution on behalf of the school board, and I want to read it and recognize you at this time. This is a resolution from the Ferguson Florissant School Board, reads as follows. Whereas Thomas P. Snyder has promoted and served the Florissant community for approximately 40 years as a member of the city council from 1979 until 2011, and as mayor since 2011. And whereas Mayor Snyder has recognized that public education is a cornerstone of every successful community, and whereas Mayor Snyder understands that the vitality of the Ferguson Florissant School District is essential to the progress of not only the city of Florissant, but of the St. Louis metropolitan area. And whereas Mayor Snyder has made education in our community one of his priorities, collaborating on a variety of annual civic and educational events, and whereas Mayor Snyder has served as an advisor, mentor, and promoter of good citizenship in our schools by speaking about the legacy of American presidents and other great leaders to enrich the lives of students, and whereas Mayor Snyder's leadership has consistently prompted citizens to take responsibility for the welfare of our children and provide our schools with resources they need to prepare good citizens for tomorrow, and whereas Mayor Snyder's commitment to public education and public service has enriched our community to the betterment of all, now therefore be it resolved that the Ferguson Florissant School Board recognizes Mayor Snyder's achievements and his contributions to the North St. Louis community, and specifically to the city of Florissant and the schools of Ferguson Florissant. And also be it resolved that we express our appreciation and gratitude for those contributions and wishes him well in the years to come on this 12th day of September. Congratulations, Mayor Snyder.
Thank you, Dr. Davis, and thank you to the school board and the administration. Usually, I'm the one giving these things out, so this is a little different, it feels a little different. Very much appreciated, you know, I've been serving either the nation or the city for all my adult life, for 50 years. I was in the Navy, active duty, four and a half years Navy Seabees, and then I got a commission in the Naval Civil Engineer Corps, I served four and a half years in the Reserve, then I was elected to the city council, and now mayor, and in between, I also was a city engineer for two years for the city. So I've got, I'm in my 52nd year of service to either the city or to the nation, and I've enjoyed every minute of it. It's been very meaningful and rewarding and enriching and fulfilling for me to serve the greater good of the community. And the schools are such an important part of that, that's why I was so fortunate to be able to be invited to speak to mostly honors history students, but on a couple occasions, I spoke to school assemblies about leaders like John F. Kennedy and Martin Luther King, and Bobby Kennedy, and Abraham Lincoln, Theodore Roosevelt, and other great Americans, Eleanor Roosevelt, Churchill, great leaders of the Western civilization. And they were very attentive and had great questions and very interested in what I had to say. So you have a great student body, you have great parents, you have a great community. One thing I want to leave you with about our valley, you know, we got, we've been here for a long time. We've been here for, going on 250 years almost. French settlers came into this valley, and then they welcomed the Spanish, and they welcomed the Irish and the German, and our demographics have been changing for over two centuries, so we're kind of used to it. And we like each other up here in Florissant, Hazelwood area, the Florissant Valley. And that's something that's very refreshing to me, something I noticed when Mayor Egan hired me and I came up here in 1976, that people up in our area, they don't care what corner of the world your ancestors came from, they just care if you're a wholesome person and they like you. And I found that very refreshing, and I think that's one of the things that makes our community great. Thank you.
are here.
Can we give a hand as Alfonso Martin and Jalen Walker Wright come to be recognized for their participation in Boys State?
Each month, the communications team presents a short video of district highlights and successes. We will now have the shared images of success.
Students, teachers, and staff all across the Ferguson Florissant School District are experiencing success. On Tuesday, August 21st, Halls Ferry Elementary held their Community Matters Block Party. The block party brought together local organizations and resources for students and families, including Cardinal Glennon Hospital, Coles Cares, Batteron College, and the Extreme Institute, St. Louis County Library, Regent's Bank, La Cole Culinera, and many more. The community block party was designed to focus on making the Halls Ferry community stronger and safer. During the block party, Cardinal Glennon held a car seat class where they explained car seat safety and even provided car seats to families. The block party was supported by a grant from Walmart, which covered all expenses of the party. Thank you to all who attended and supported the Community Matters Block Party. The McClure High School Army JROTC Comic Cadet Battalion recently held its annual promotion and assumption of command ceremonies. The Comic Battalion Cadet Chain of Command for the 2018-2019 school year is as follows. Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Arkela Page will be the Cadet Battalion Commander. Cadet Major Tierra Worsham will be the Cadet Battalion Executive Officer. Cadet Command Sergeant Major Kyra Sanders will be the Cadet Command Sergeant Major. And Cadet Sergeant Major Aaron Stroud will be the Cadet Sergeant Major. Congratulations to this dynamic group of cadets who will assist in leading the battalion to excellence. Retired Lieutenant Colonel Daryl Gray and retired Sergeant Major Emis Griffin Jr. are the McClure Army JROTC instructors. On half-days during the 2018-2019 school year, Combs Elementary parents and guardians will be joining their children and staff during their school day. Families are a way for students to connect with others within the school community and to create a sense of belonging. By including members from each grade level, all staff and students have the opportunity to build relationships with others who they may not have an opportunity to interact with on a regular basis. Students will also spend time participating in fun team-building activities. The McClure South Berkeley Bulldogs basketball team is making reading a priority for themselves and others. Books with Bulldogs take the high school basketball players into the district's elementary schools to participate in interactive reading with students. Airport Elementary was the first stop of the Books with Bulldogs program. The goal of the program is to encourage reading readiness and build relationships with elementary students and high school mentors. You can learn more about these stories and other examples of the great learning happening in our district on our website and on social media.
This portion of the meeting is allocated to show a short video from the Missouri School Board Association to provide a report of current activities and events that may be of interest to board members and the community.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report for the month of September. We thank you for the opportunity to share some news and information during a few minutes of your board meeting. We begin with a look at the search for a permanent commissioner of education here in Missouri. Now that the State Board of Education has a quorum and can conduct business again, it is resuming the search for a new commissioner of education, following the removal of Margie Van Devene as commissioner last December. The State Board of Education appointed Dr. Roger Dorson as interim commissioner at that time, and the State Board of Education President Charlie Shields told board members at last month's state board meeting, "There's no rush to name a permanent commissioner since the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education continues to function very well."
I think Commissioner Dorson is doing a fabulous job leading the department. So the last thought is that there's not a burning platform here that says we have to rush into any decisions regarding the commissioner. What I would ask, I think I asked you at the June meeting to think about the characteristics, I'd ask you not to report back on what you believe the characteristics are, but I would think to come back at the September meeting, report back on what you think those characteristics are, but also how you think, as board members, we should proceed in this discussion.
There was also some preliminary discussion at the August state board meeting about the state funding requests for the fiscal year beginning next July. Department of Elementary and Secondary Education staff is proposing the state board request full state funding for student transportation over a nine-year period beginning next year. Right now, there's about a $200 million shortfall in state funding for student transportation. Local school districts have had to assume a greater share of transportation costs over the years, as state funding in that area has declined. MSBA has advocated strongly for increased state funding for student transportation. MSBA President Mike Pratt testified on school safety issues during a recent meeting in Chicago hosted by Deputy Secretary of Education Mitchell Zayas. Pratt said there's a strong need for synchronization among agencies responsible for safety. He said, "States, as well as federal agencies with responsibility for school safety, need an effective program to immediately message down to school districts any high-level threat potentially impacting school children." Pratt also said there's a need to have assessment tools to understand and rank the full scope of school safety risk beyond just the active shooter risk. MSBA's recommendations will be provided to the Federal Commission on School Safety. MSBA administers the Center for Education Safety, the only statewide school safety organization in the state. CES is built on the premise that school safety is best addressed through a comprehensive, community-wide approach. A number of new state laws related to public education took effect at the end of August, as is often the case, following the end of a legislative session in May. And that means MSBA's Policy Department has been working to create new policies or update existing policies for school boards throughout the state. MSBA Associate Executive Director Kelly Hopkins oversees MSBA's Policy Department, and she says policy updates are designed with a goal in mind.
Obviously, compliance. Obviously, legal compliance is the first thing we consider. We also want to include enough information in our policies that districts will understand what the law means and what their policy says without having to call an attorney, although they're welcome to call us if they have questions.
Hopkins says policy updates are also designed to support boards in making informed decisions and to protect school districts from making costly and damaging mistakes. The latest policy update from MSBA addresses a new virtual education law, elections, whistleblower protection, gifted education, school counseling, and other issues. All MSBA-member school boards receive basic policy updates, while some 240 school boards throughout the state participate in a more customized policy service. MSBA's annual school personnel information survey is now open. This survey collects information on the wages, salaries, and benefits of teachers and other school employees to help boards and administrators make fully informed personnel decisions. MSBA-member districts that complete the survey and submit their salary schedules and collective bargaining agreements by November 12th this year receive free access to the data collected. Make sure your district's information is included in this year's database. Your school district staff can submit your district's information through the MSBA website. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and so long from Columbia.
This portion of the meeting is allocated for the board to provide an update of current activities and events in the district that may be of special interest to the board members and the community. We will now have Mr. Scott Eber.
Well, hello, everyone. First, I want to thank the staff, teachers, everybody, for the great start to school year. Everything seems to be going pretty good, and we're really excited about that, and mainly the students and parents who are making this all possible. So, you know, big, big thank you for that. This is our first meeting in this wonderful room, so bear with us as we try to learn things like the new speakers and stuff like that, and televisions, and monitors, and all that, but it sure is a little more comfortable than the other room, that's for sure. Just on another note, I want to say that I was fortunate enough to personally get to know Mayor Snyder during, I met him in my first election cycle, and it's before he was mayor, and before I was up here. And as time progressed, I just wanted to say thank you to him on a personal level. He's helped me in many ways, but his love of Florissant is undeniable. I mean, he's Florissant through and through, and the work he's done for that city is unbelievable. I can only hope that I can do half of what he's done in his lifetime. He, you know, they say about one of his priorities being the school district, well, he always said that this district is the engine that keeps the whole community, the city, North County, everything moving. So I would say this is probably his number-one priority, and he always kept a pulse on it, as other board members can verify. So I really want to thank him for that. On a personal note, I saw him in the classrooms. He went in, came home, when I came home from work one day, my kids were telling me about Mayor Snyder sitting down on the floor with a bunch of elementary, I guess they were second graders at the time, and teaching a second-grade kind of history class, so I got a kick out of that. got a kick out of that. Lauren and him made a connection to this day. They still communicate, and they're great friends. So, I guess, more importantly, I want to thank him for everything he's done, but more importantly, being my good friend, and I'll definitely miss him in Florissant, in the arena in Florissant, but I'll always have a friend, and that's very important to me. So, thank you very much, Mayor Snyder.
Thank you, Mr. Ebert. Ms. Ponder?
Thank you. I have the accreditation and achievement update. On August 8th, District of Office Leadership Principals and Coaches participated in equity training with education equity consultants. Leaders took an in-depth look at how race creates barriers and how collective intent and understanding can partner to help improve our students' lives and community. We have completed our first STAR Benchmark Assessment in ELA in math. This data will inform our PLC work and assist us in adjusting instruction, individualized learning for students. Dyslexia screenings have began September 4th. While the district is not identifying students as having dyslexia, we are providing additional support for students identified as potentially having a reading disorder. There will be an update coming later this meeting with more information on that. Planning and preparation have begun from our principal lab days, which will begin October 30th. Lesson Study PD, Lesson Study is a model of professional development in which teachers regularly gather to plan, observe, collect data on, analyze, and learn from research lessons they teach. This is a facilitator-led learning experience that prepares teams of teachers to implement effective lessons at their schools. Last month, we began Lesson Study with the new reading curriculum. Teachers had an opportunity to watch a master teacher plan and get feedback on implementation of being a reader and making meaning. This work was led by Jen Kreisen, our Elementary Humanities Specialist. McClure North is one month away from the deadline for submitting the application for authorization. On September 1st, the IB consultant will be submitting his final candidacy report used to inform the application for authorization. On September 21st, staff will engage in PD around the four-year goals, specifically pre-writing strategies that help students organize their thinking as they justify their claim. On September 21st, elementary teachers will have the opportunity to engage in professional development with National Presenter Peter Braun around deepening practice and rigor through facilitating the integration of academic and social development. In this session, teachers will explore the importance of relationships in teaching and learning, and teaching practices that support deep learning and engagement. Lastly, principals have received professional development in the area of science that focuses on feedback and support to ensure quality science instruction is being delivered daily. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ponder. Now, we will have Dr. Donna Paul Therman.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I'd like to say Happy New Year to our board president and any of our Jewish families in our community. Also, Mayor Snyder, congratulations on your retirement, but don't be fooled by retirement, because I retired in 2009, and I work more now than I did when I worked, and I don't get paid. So, congratulations, and we really appreciate the work that you've done for our school district and how important education is to you. My area is decorum. During the first two weeks of school, all staff have been engaged in a video study of how to write a referral as part of the due-process procedures for students. Several major topics of importance were discussed in the video study. All staff having legal right and responsibility to write a referral in order to maintain an environment that is conducive to learning and safety. The language contained in the referral should always be professional, objective, and specific to the incident or person the referral is written on. All referrals should be written in timely manner. Only the originator of the referral should edit or alter a written referral. Administrators should address referrals within 24 hours. Now, this is the data on our 2018-2019 school year. Total referrals so far this year, 448. Referrals so far this year compared to this time last year are slightly up, didn't I want to hear that, 24 more than last year. Some of them included skipping class, 24% of the referrals. 14% of the referrals were on student, were a student conference. 2% were out-of-school suspensions, and that's up 2%, I'm sorry. In-school suspension, up 6%. Long-term suspension, down 14%. The administration and staff remain committed to changing the culture across the district through our district plan for decorum. And of course, we want to see those numbers go in a different direction, and we will be definitely looking at where we are and looking at the numbers and working to decrease those numbers, incidents, and referrals. That is my report.
Thank you, Dr. Therman. We will now have Ms. Leslie Hawkes here.
Good evening. I'm on the talent management, and I have the update. Staffing, due to the hard work of the principals and interview teams, the district has filled 100% of its teaching positions. Also, additional teachers are being hired in order to alleviate overcrowding at Commons Lane, Halls Ferry, Holman, and Vought Elementary. And I just want to say that I'm so happy that the Talent Committee and Dr. Davis, that we are being proactive in getting more teachers in the classroom as soon as possible at the beginning of the year, so thank you very much for that. Substitute services, the administration will bring a recommendation tonight to contract with an external vendor for substitute services. The priority will be to ensure that all classes have a qualified educator with students at all times, and more will be discussed later. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkes. Now, we will have Ms. Hodge.
Good evening, everyone. I want to say congratulations to Mayor Snyder for your retirement, and we appreciate everything you've done for our community. I have the engagement stakeholders for the community. The district is actively working to build community, engage stakeholders in a variety of meaningful ways. We have had a great start this school year, but we want to remind drivers in our community to watch out for our students traveling to and from school and slow down in school zones. We want to make sure our students are safe. Our new mask notification system is operational, and you should be receiving messages regarding your child and school and district events. If you are not receiving these messages from your child's school, please contact the office to be certain that we have your correct contact information. Having accurate contact information on file helps you stay informed for day-to-day events, but especially important in event of an emergency. And this is the year for Little Creek's celebration of 50 years for Ferguson-Florissant School District. For our students and the community, an anniversary celebration will be held October 20th during our annual Little Creek Homecoming. Please make plans to join us for that celebration, and watch for details of the day's events on our website. And these are just some of the ways that our district is connecting with stakeholders. Remember, our district website, furgflora.org, is the place where you can go to find information, leading to links of many resources, including our parent portal, menus, staff directories, social media, and much more. We have an updated one, and if you're not familiar with that, it's supposed to be user-friendly. It is, I've been on it several times, but there also is a way you can go on the old way. If that's too much for you, we also have the old website where you can go on to as well. The district is committed to building connections with stakeholders for all the benefit of all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hodge. Mr. Shabok?
Good evening, everyone. So, I'm on the infrastructures processes for the strategic plan, and the administration facilities have been very busy getting our new boardroom set up, as well as maintaining the district buildings. But the biggest work they've been putting in has been preparing for the upcoming meeting on the 26th. I'm sure you're all aware, we have a meeting on the 26th regarding the restructuring. Communications Department's been fantastic, sending out multiple text messages and voice messages and so forth, so I encourage everybody to spread the word, and I know, I think you'll probably talk about how many tickets have been sold, but this is kind of an exciting time for the school district. This is something that's been in the works for a couple of years. Discussions have been going on for many years prior to that. I've really enjoyed sitting down with people and talking about the direction of our school district and what the possibilities are as we're moving forward. I'm hearing more positive than negative. I know a lot of people are worried about what's going to take place, but I think when you talk about creating those educational opportunities, and that's something I'm really grateful for this board, because it's a conversation that we have on many levels, about creating more opportunities for our students, and I think this restructuring that we're going to be going through is with that goal in mind. So, I look forward to seeing everybody on the 26th.
Thank you, Mr. Shabok. So, on behalf of the Ferguson-Florissant School District, I would like to take this opportunity to welcome each of you, and thank you for joining us this evening in our brand-new boardroom. I want to commend our Facilities Department for a job well done. As we progress forward in this, in the new school year, the district continues to focus on the betterment of our schools. The safety and security of our children is always of paramount importance and our first priority. There are also exciting initiatives underway that will continue to be worked on and implemented throughout the school year, including maintenance, upgrades, and improvements to our facilities and technology. We strive to provide the very best possible learning environment to ensure that our young minds are continuing to be challenged in the best and most efficient ways possible. So, this year, I encourage you to become an active participant in your child's education. Being involved in your child's school, parent-teacher organizations, and or volunteering to participate in the many other available school activity opportunities are some of the most rewarding experiences for a parent or community member. In addition, I encourage you to stay informed of the happenings not only in your schools, but also within the district. A good place to start is where you are here tonight in our board meetings. It is a strong homeschool partnership that will make a difference for the betterment in your child's education and the education for all of our students. So, tonight, I just want to say, or clear up any misunderstandings about tonight's meeting and the restructuring meeting on September 26th at 6:00 PM in the McClure High School Hub. Tonight's meeting is a regular-scheduled board meeting with the business to conduct to keep our schools running and our students learning. We will have our usual opportunity for comments this evening. As we shared in the spring and over the summer, MGT Consulting Group has been conducting facilities assessments of all the buildings in the district. They are in the final stages of preparing their report at this time. MGT representatives will share the results of their assessment and the community at the meeting on September 26th. In addition, the board and administration has received a great deal of input from stakeholders throughout the community. We appreciate all the concerns, the memories that have been shared, and the opinions regarding the district, and especially the schools that we all hold dear to us. We have heard you, and we have listened. The September 26th meeting will include the results of the assessments and revised options based on the assessment and community feedback for the board to consider as we plan for the future of our students and the district. Details of the September 26th meeting are not finalized yet, but I assure you that parents, students, and the community will have an opportunity to hear the results of the assessment, see revised options, and provide feedback. We have received over 900 ticket requests for the September 26th meeting. We hope you will join us that evening as we contemplate the importance of preserving our memories while planning for our children's and the community's future. Thank you. FFNEA, alrighty.
Yeah, I promised you I was handing this off this year, and here's me again. Sorry, but I wanted to, I actually have a prepared statement this evening that I'd like to read due to some recent events, so. Board members, oh, you know what, first, I'm sorry. I'm Lori Samelman, President of the FFNEA. I would like to speak to you as the President of the FFNEA. As you know, the Ferguson-Florissant NEA agreed to join a plaintiff group in a lawsuit against the recently enacted House Bill 1413. Because of this action, the Ferguson-Florissant School District was named as one of the many defendants. I want to state publicly that this is not due to any labor-management concerns. The FFNEA has agreed to participate purely because we believe this to be a law which impacts our association and many others in Missouri in an extremely negative way. FSD was named only due to its being an organization mandated by this law to implement many of the components which will negatively impact the association. Again, to be clear, the school district and the FFNEA find themselves on different sides of this lawsuit, not because there are internal issues which could not be worked through, but instead because House Bill 1413 makes it so by its language and its requirements. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Samelman. Dr. Davis?
Alrighty, good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here, and I always have a lot to say, so tonight is no different. So, first, I want to say that I've been in every school the first couple of days when we started on August 9th, and we've had a really smooth start, and that's noteworthy. Our students are in. We are excited about where we are right now. The concern that I have found that I think is really, really important, in fact, yesterday afternoon, we had a meeting upstairs, and principals were here, and their attendance champions, if you will, were here as well, and that is getting students here on the first day of school. That is something that we have to, as a community, work together on. I need students here on the first day of school, especially those students who were with us the previous year and are going to be with us again. We have online verification process that we go through often for the last couple of years, especially since we've transitioned and some of our data collection practices. So, that has been something that has been a concern for me, but as far as school getting started, students being here, smooth running, students are in class, instructions going on, I couldn't be more pleased, and we'll continue to work hard to make sure that we're delivering on that for our students and our community. I also want to acknowledge Judge Boyle. He wrote a letter to our school district from the Florissant Municipal Court. So, they've actually opened their own facility, but they've used Cross Keys Middle School for the last few years to hold municipal court, and he wanted to, he wrote this letter acknowledging his thanks and gratitude for the cooperation, acknowledging they won't any longer need that because they have their own facility. We went to the ribbon-cutting groundbreaking ceremony, ribbon-cutting probably more appropriate, and it's a beautiful facility, and so he just wanted to send this and acknowledge the cooperation and support that they've gotten from us and certainly we get from them as well. I wanted to really address a number of things here. One, first thing I want to do is to talk a little bit about class size, and Ms. Hawkes had mentioned this a moment ago, and I've had a number of, you know, conversations with people about class size. So, last year, for those of you who may not know, we spent a lot of time on staffing. Specifically, I met with every principal at every school with their supervisor, talking about class sizes, talking specifically about the numbers of students in classes, and we historically, well, in the last couple of years anyway, have had some pretty small classes that is not the best use of tax dollars. And so, we did some staffing work last year. I met with all principals, looked at class sizes from kindergarten all the way through, and we did not reduce, or nobody lost a job. We maximized, meaning that we made class sizes appropriate so that we could more efficiently use our tax dollars. Not one person was laid off, and there were sometimes rumors being thrown around about that, and that absolutely was not true and still is not to this moment. No one has lost a job, nor have we had to lay off anyone, but we have, I think, been pretty fiscally responsible at maximizing those positions. We used attrition, so if someone left, then we necessarily hired someone for that role, in particular if we didn't need to. What we did was, we held on to those positions, and then, let me say to you today that I'm happy to say that we were able to take those positions from last year after doing that maximization, and were able to put them back in classes, as Ms. Hawkes was talking about a moment ago. 100% of our teaching staff has been hired. We specifically, and this is something that the board has made a priority when it comes to our bookends, if you will, making sure our students have small class sizes early on, especially kids who come to us that have not had their early education. So, we've been able to maximize those positions in our elementary schools in particular. So, that's some numbers for you that I think you may be happy to hear about. I know our kindergarten teachers have been pretty excited. In fact, when I met with the association a couple of days ago, one of our kindergarten teachers was there, and just thanked the administration and the board for this work that we've done to make sure that we have smaller class sizes in our elementary school, especially kindergarten. especially kindergarten. So these are just staff-student ratios at the kindergarten level. I don't have time to go through all of them for every grade level, but I do think kindergarten is important because we spend a lot of time thinking about making sure our kids, when they first get to us, have that individualized attention and support they need. And I'm going to start from the very beginning. I'll go pretty fast here. You'll see some patterns. So the teacher-student ratio for kindergarten only in all of our elementary schools are as follows. Airport, 1 to 18. Bermuda, 1 to 16. This is as of yesterday. This is as of 9/11, yesterday. Again, airport, 1 to 18. Bermuda, 1 to 16. Central, 1 to 13. Combs, 1 to 17. Commons Lane, 1 to 17. Cooley Valley, 1 to 11. Duchesne, 1 to 18. Griffith, 1 to 14. Holls Ferry, 1 to 13. Holman, 1 to 14. Johnson-Wabash is the largest, 1 to 24. Class size is 25, and so we certainly have been looking at that, but that's the biggest one we have. Lee Hamilton, 1 to 16. Parker Road, 1 to 16. Robinwood, 1 to 19. Vogt, 1 to 14. Walnut Grove, 1 to 19. Wedgewood, 1 to 19. The average elementary kindergarten class size in this district is 1 to 17. That's huge, because we had classes the year before that were busting, and we had to add additional aides, not being able to get a teacher, so that a teacher would have 28 students in a class with kindergarten, and even with an aide, that becomes pretty challenging for a kindergarten teacher. But the nice part about it, now, that's just kindergarten. Broadly, our entire elementary schools, our average class size is 1 to 22 in K through 6, right? So that's the commitment that this board has charged the administration with to make sure we maximize on our resources, and we put that money back in the classroom so that we have teachers and students with small class sizes, rather appropriate ones, but definitely under what DESI requires. Kindergarten and first and second grade, the maximum is 25, and we're well under that with 1 to 17. So that is noteworthy, and I wanted to make sure I said that out loud because I've gotten a number of calls, I think the board may have gotten some calls as well, with different stories saying that they were busting, and that is absolutely not true. And I've given you the facts right here. I'd be more than happy to talk with anyone individually about it, but across the board for all of our K through 6, our class sizes are in pretty good shape, 1 to 22 being the average for our elementary schools. Couple of other things really quickly. I also wanted to echo something that Dr. Graves spoke about, and that was the restructuring meeting on the 26th. Mr. Hampton sent out a call just last night also to inform the community again about the differences, because there was some confusion around what tonight was for and what the 26 is for. And let me say that, you know, we got a couple of calls today, and folks were saying that we were censoring or not allowing people to talk about restructuring. You know, that is absolutely not true. What we didn't want is for folks to come tonight expecting to engage in that conversation and then not get some response to that and leave frustrated. We'll have public comment time. You know, folks will have an opportunity to make comments pertaining to that, but the 26 in particular is where we want to make sure we provide the community with the timeline that we laid out way back last year, before we even got to our community meetings in April. We actually started this conversation in December. If you remember, we had a meeting over MSB specifically around some misinformation around voting central. And so from there all the way through, we've been pretty consistent with our timeline. And so on the 26th, we have over 900 tickets that have been claimed. There's no cost. We just wanted to make sure we could appropriately serve the community. We started out at Ferguson Community Center, which only houses about 320 some odd people. And so the reason we asked for folks to, you know, designate tickets is because had we not done that, we would have had folks all in the parking lot at the Ferguson Community Center. But doing those tickets, those EVITES, are really, really important, because when we get that data, we know, we knew we couldn't do it there. So we moved it, and so now it's at McClure in the hub, and so we have plenty of space to be able to serve the community. But we want to make sure that we give folks an opportunity to weigh in. We've been listening. I've been listening. I, in fact, went to the Berkeley City Council meeting a couple of weeks ago and spoke, Mayor Hoskins let me speak there. I had an opportunity to share some of what we've been talking about. Haven't shared anything additionally yet because the board is looking at some other things with the building assessment system. But I wanted to make sure we were clear on that, that we are not, the board is not, the administration is not, trying to keep anybody from saying anything. In fact, we've been listening diligently and have been responding accordingly. Tonight won't be engaging in that conversation, but the 26, absolutely, is totally dedicated to making sure that we give anybody in the community the opportunity so that we can make sure we appropriately respond. So I wanted to say that. Then I'll say lastly, I'll just repeat again, it's 9/26/17, I'm sorry, 17, 18. September 26 of this month, be 6:00 PM, we'll start at McClure High School in the hub. Lastly, I want to say that it was mentioned earlier when Ms. Ponder was talking about our academics. So this year, in 2018, so at the end of last year, science was not included in our APR score. In Missouri, 140 points is possible for a district when we look at the district's APR, which is the annual performance report. That's the score we get that you all see in the news. At first last year was, in 2017, it was 67.4. Had gone down from 70.6, I think it was, a 4. And so that's the score everybody looks at, right? So you get 140 total points possible. 2018 was only 120 because science was taken out, okay? Science is going to be put back in this year. And with that, we've been spending a lot of time preparing our teachers in 5th grade, which is where science is tested, in 8th grade, as well as in biology in high school. That will be back into that calculation this year, and we have not been resting. We've been working diligently to make sure that our science teachers, all of them, not just in those four areas, but in every grade level, is adopting the new science practices, science and engineering practices, and making sure that teachers are supported and making sure we can teach our students well. So please keep that in mind, that as we go through 2019, that science will be included. I think social studies may come out this year because that is being field-tested, and we've traditionally done pretty well in social studies, but we haven't gotten any points historically over the last couple of years in science. And so that's something we're going to be pushing really hard this year. I'll end by saying that underneath science is reading. Reading, reading, reading. Reading, 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 and reading some more. I cannot stress enough how important it is for you to help support our district and our students, whether you have children in the district or you're invested in the community. Nothing's more powerful than students knowing how to read extremely well, not just fluently, but also comprehending, and that is what our, your focus, our goal has been on. That is my report. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. The board allocates this portion of the meeting to allow stakeholders the opportunity to comment on both agenda items and non-agenda items at the start of each board meeting. Prior to the public comment period, participants are asked to fill out a comment card with their name, address, phone number, email address, and topic to be addressed, and will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. Members of the audience who wish to speak to the board are requested to speak from the podium, identify themselves in keeping with the district policies 4054, 4059, and personnel law. Should refrain from making negative comments that are personally identifiable. While the board will not directly respond to speakers during the public comment period, the board president may make clarifying remarks at the end of the comment session to correct any misstatement of facts. We will now have Cassandra Butler to discuss school board elections and voting court case.
So I know at the last board meeting, I asked if the Ferguson Florescent School District was planning on appealing the court case about voting so the community could decide how to approach the school board elections this year. And since then, I found out from other sources that the school board has indicated that they plan to take that court case about community, how the community elects its school board members to the United States Supreme Court, that the paperwork has been filed. So along those lines, I have a couple of questions to ask the school board about that process. So I have four questions. The first question is, why is it in the entire community's interest that the school board continue to fight this decision? So that's my first question. Second question is, how much has this court case cost the district thus far? My third question is, how much more do you project that it's going to cost to take this, fight this case further with the United States Supreme Court? And my fourth question is, are there any outside organizations that are donating funds or contributing to the cost of furthering this court case? So those are my four questions that I would like to be answered either email or in any other way that you would like to, but I would like answers to those. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Butler. We will now have Mr. Hoskins, Mayor Berkeley.
To the President, to the Superintendent, to the Board, thank you for giving me the opportunity. Unfortunately, it was only a couple of weeks that, as the Superintendent indicated, that he came to City Berkeley, and since I felt that that part of the district maybe have the significant impact, we probably should have been the first one that you approached. My question is, I've looked at the three options, and I'm just curious, has there been another consideration of any other options? You know, just being a layman myself, I thought in terms of if we moved the complete STEM program to South and continued to retain the rigor education at South, you would not have to move any students from McClure or McClure North. The only students you would change were those that were being bused for the STEM program. And I was just curious if you ever gave consideration to that fourth option, because it appears that regards, what's the option is, and I've been in this a long time. I know for a fact that whatever option on the 26 or whenever you come up with, that has already been decided. But we go through this process to try to tell the public that we go into this systematic process to come up with the system where we already know what the process is. And for whatever reason, the South part of the district always come up short. Now, the elected officials, when you run, you come to us asking for our support. After you get elected, it's time for us to come to you and ask for your support. Don't sell South out. I don't care what your pressure is. Your pressure is those that you represent, not on this board. And I understand that the majority of the people on this board live North, but that does not make it right to give everything to those that live North. If 80% of the district is black, then you should not penalize those that in the black community, because the larger community has made a decision to leave the district. So since they have left the district, why would you penalize those that's going to South Berkeley? Initially, Berkeley School was giving. All I'm asking, let me summarize with the 10 seconds here, retain Berkeley South as an educational general system. You might put the STEM in it, but I guess that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Hoskins. We will now have Mr. McLendon talk about the Bridge Program and Missouri Boy State. Before he comes up, there is an Infinity in the parking lot that left their lights We don't have the color, but it's an Infinity. Go ahead, Mr. McLendon, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon, good evening, President of the Board and Superintendent, School Board members. The main thing that I need to talk about sideboard right quick. You have 900 people coming to McClure School on the 26th. Where are they, where's 900 people going to park? Okay? You need to take that in consideration, Dr. Davis. 900 people cannot park over at McClure High School. Okay? The other thing that I'm concerned about is on item 3, item 4, and 5, the presentation that you're making, can we make sure that the students are available on the night of their presentations? If a student is bused to school during the day, how would they get over here in the evening time? That needs to be considered, because yes, some of them came in late, but the issue was, how can they be here on time? I know that we want this to be, you know, show that the kids are achieving different activities and what things and awards and stuff. Just want to make sure that we do that. The assessment, building assessment, we need that, board members, prior to the meeting on the 26th. We need that building assessment before that time. That's another, you can't ram that. We've been talking about that for a while, and if we had the building assessment prior to that meeting, we could talk about the things and we could talk about with assessment. Now, the young, the people of the company going to come and just make a presentation, that's not going to benefit us at all because we can't ask questions about it. So that building assessment, well, we need that. We need that right away. The other thing is, the program, the last meeting I was at, I asked about the STEM program. I asked the board to look into the STEM program. I don't know, I didn't get a response. Nobody called me. I didn't get an email or anything of that nature. I like a response to the STEM program because the word on the street is the STEM program is not all, everything that everybody said it is. Oh, yeah, you might be having a lot of the grades and whatever, but some kids, some people are taking their kids out of the STEM program and taking them over to Berkeley High School. I know that for a fact, okay? So we need to, I, board members, please look into it and get back with me and let me know what's going on with that. That's very important to me. And that's about it. I'd just like to say I'd like to thank Mayor Hoskins for the comment he gave. I feel the same way. Board members, we're responsible to us, like we're responsible to you.
Thank you, Mr. McLendon. We will now have Ms. Hoskins, who is a Berkeley graduate.
To the President and the Superintendent, as she mentioned, I'm Kelly Hoskins. I have three minutes, so I'm going to go. I want to talk about the dark cloud that's over the company. The Ferguson Florescent School District hired MGT of America, who conducted a survey of all district buildings, and it cost the school board close to $100,000, $67,000 to do those results. I want everyone, if you leave here tonight, to Google Dallas Dance. There's an article, these are all facts, in the Baltimore Sun-Times newspaper. The Baltimore County Public Schools Superintendent Dallas Dance, who left his job in June 29, 2007. Dallas Dance, was 36-years-old superintendent, became a senior vice president for the MGT Consulting Group, a large Florida-based company, the company that's doing the analysis for our Ferguson Florescent School District. The former Baltimore County Superintendent Dallas Dance pleaded guilty of four counts of perjury for failing to disclose nearly $147,000 he earned... he earned from consulting jobs, including payments from a company he helped with a no-bid contract with the school. Prosecutors recommended a sentence of five years, and Dallas Dance served eighteen months of his sentencing. In March, Dallas Dance once again pleaded guilty. The school board president at that time said that he had us fooled, and he signed the contract, and Dallas Dance admitted to these things. I'm saying to the Board, if you accept the MGT presents to the district here, we'll be like no district other, and we will not be trusted. Those numbers align with what you're proposing. They're known to go across the country. Look at what they did in the city of St. Louis. They recommended closing buildings, and Richard Gaines at that time said, "How can you wanna close schools and then build other ones?" So I'm asking you and everyone to, we go to your computers tonight, Google Dallas Dance and MGT Consulting Group. You will find a lot of information, facts about this company, and how they go into urban communities, and what they recommend. I can tell you what they're gonna recommend. The buildings need paint, you need to close some buildings, enrollment is down, and this is the reason they're gonna recommend it. Get a STEM school. If you close these schools, you're gonna change lives forever. You awarded these young men for track here tonight. Imagine merging them into other schools, how that's gonna affect their lives. Think of Sarah who walks into that building every day, not knowing if next year she's gonna walk into that school to be with her friends and her teachers, who have been with her all of that time. So as I take my seat, the next board meeting, I hope we have information on the 26th to give to those nine hundred people about Dallas Dance. They will have that golden ticket. My favorite movie was The Chocolate Factory. They'll have that golden ticket, but along with that golden ticket, have information about Dallas Dance and the MGT Consulting Group. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hoskins. Right now, we're gonna take a ten-minute break, and we'll see you guys back in ten Board Secretary, can you please read the disbursements?
For the payroll for teacher and non-teacher, we have eleven million, four hundred and seventy-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-two fifty. For operational disbursements, one million, seven hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-sixty-five, making a total of thirteen million, two hundred and sixteen thousand, eight oh three fifteen.
May I have a recommendation to the approved consent agenda as presented?
I still recommend.
My second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Hearing none? We will now have Dr. Deanna Kitten and Dr. Hazel talk about Educational Equity Consultants.
Good evening, Board. We have the pleasure of presenting the Educational Equity Consultant Agreement for Approval Tonight. The Educational Equity Consultant will provide in-depth training to Ferguson Middle School and Berkeley Middle School student leaders about race and equity awareness. The student social justice leaders will align the training to build and support positive school climate and cultures. As the social justice leaders educate and support learning of the staff and students, it is highly anticipated that the number of referrals will be reduced by at least ten percent. In addition, Educational Equity will provide teacher training at Berkeley Middle School and Lee Hamilton for a total of ten thousand dollars. We are recommending the approval of the Educational Equity Consultant Agreement in the amount not to exceed seventeen thousand using Title I and School Improvement A funds.
May I please have a motion? Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You have Education Equity.
Thank you.
We will now have Ms. Shatana Hurd and Cynthia Wise discuss early childhood and SSD Miranda. Oh, Tiffany, I'm sorry.
It's gonna be me. Ms. Hurd and Ms. Wise weren't able to join us, and so I'm going to read for them this evening. Each year, Early Childhood Special Education partners with Special School District for specific services for qualifying students with disabilities. Services provided are for students who are identified as deaf or hearing impaired, blind and visually impaired, orientation and mobility. Consultative services by Augmentative Communication Facilitator, consultative services by an Autism Spectrum Disorder Facilitator, and then Early Childhood Special Education Services for St. Louis County residents who are enrolled in early education and childcare settings within our school district. And then the program services for preschool children with significant social-emotional behaviors. It's specific to Early Childhood Special Education and annual memorandum of understanding between SSD and FFSD. The recommendation is to approve the partnership for services for Early Childhood Special Education with Special School District.
May I have a recommendation? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favors, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Tiffany, again with Math Fact Fluency.
The purpose of this short presentation is to provide the Board of Education with an update regarding mathematics. This past summer, several teachers representing schools across the district, K8, received training around Math Fact Fluency and to build their foundation of understanding and to create a vetted resource for implementation of Math Fact Fluency as it relates to district curriculum and implementation of Missouri learning standards. As a result of this work, we'll be able to forego renewal of the purchase of Math Facts in a Flash at a cost savings of nearly fifteen thousand dollars. Adam Smith will provide a short presentation to overview the work and resources within our curriculum.
Good evening, Board. So I'm just here to provide some context about what Tiffany just described, and just give a little bit of insight to the work that our teachers did, and one of whom is our lovely FFNEA President, Ms. Lori Salmon, Instructional Support Leader at Combs, and Dr. Lorette as well was also in attendance. So just give some stats. So it really was a district representation. We had representation from these schools listed, as well as these grade levels. So it truly was a K8 district-represented effort. It lasted three days, some in-depth training around fact fluency, some development of collective efficacy, as John Hattie likes to say, and we had a lot of good learning. So here are just some snippets from our training over the summer, and I have linked up here to the portion of the June board meetings, shared images of success, where this fact fluency training was captured, thank you to the Communications Department. And if it doesn't load, that's perfectly fine, too. You get the picture. You know what? We're not gonna do that. We're just gonna say it was, it's there. It's there on YouTube if you wanna watch it. So let me go back to the presentation. All right, so that's what that was. So just some snippets. We had about seventy-five teachers and administrators represented, so we really had representation from the whole district. So this, what we've developed is for teachers by teachers. So right here is, so I've done some work in capturing the work that the teachers did on the Math K8 website. So just to give a quick glimpse on the Fact Fluency tab, we will, you will see the framework for Fact Fluency. This is a framework that supports K8 fact fluency from rope counting all the way to fractions, decimals, et cetera, in sixth grade. You will also see resources that connect to each of these skills in the progression, so teachers can target which skills wanna work on for that day, and click on a folder for that specific skill, and pull activities for that specific skill, so the prep work, much of the prep work is already done for them, so they just have to pull and just implement as needed. And you'll also see some professional learning, so if you wanna learn more about Fact Fluency Board, you can do the same as well, because there's some articles there, just some reading to really get us all on the same page in understanding Fact Fluency. So here is just, here's just an overview of the tab on the webpage, and this is the skills progression. It goes from kindergarten all the way to sixth grade, so we have support for all levels. And then, so that's what that is right there. And as I said earlier, here's the Fact Fluency resources. So each of the grade levels have folders for each line item in the progression. So like I said, there's, we did a lot of learning in those three days, so if you really wanna learn more, I can't do another three-day presentation, I do apologize, but we do have the Fact Fluency Professional Learning here, so you can read the articles at your leisure, as well as watch some really good videos from Mr. Graham Fletcher, who is a math expert as well. So this is what we did over the summer, and this we will continue to do, and even in May, we had a meeting with our middle schools, our middle school department chairs, so all of us are in this work, and this is how we will support Fact Fluency going forward for the district. Thank you all so much.
All right, that was just for Board information. Did anyone just have any questions?
Yes.
I have just a comment or two, because I think it's really important to say this. One of the things that Tiffany read earlier was that this is a cost savings for us. So Math Fact Fluency, for those who may have some wondering of what that is, that's those basic facts that kids learn in elementary school. We've identified a problem in our elementary schools around mathematics, period. Our kids are struggling in math, and we believe it begins in elementary school. So we have historically purchased a program to give them that support, and being a math teacher, when kids get on the computer, there's always an opportunity for them to guess and not really know the facts. And I like to see kids work through and really get deep. Well, this summer, the work Adams just spoke to, teachers developed those tools that we have been paying for, so it's like creating an anchor chart in your class. If you can be creative with your students, and they are part of that work, then they own it. And so here is a resource that teachers have access to in grades K through six, that they can work with students on in building those math facts, that foundation. Instead of buying a program to do that, which, you know, hasn't really yielded the kind of results we want, we've had teachers engaged in building this and then using it. So that, to me, is more powerful, but I also wanted to just acknowledge the fact that we'll be able to save that fifteen thousand dollars we would have spent on a program.
And I will mention quickly that this is not just a one-and-done. We have actually been in classrooms, and with principals and principals, we're privy to this information as well, making sure that we are being as supportive as possible and seeing this implemented in daily instruction. So we're here to support, not just in the summer, but as we implement this and roll it out for this year and beyond, so thank you.
All right, any other discussion, questions? Thank you so much. We will now have Tiffany and Ms. Jennifer come talk about dyslexia updates.
Pursuant to the revised Missouri Statute 167.950, and in accordance with the findings in the Legislative Task Force on Dyslexia, the Ferguson-Florissant School District has created a plan to provide professional development around screening for and the reason, sorry, professional development around screening for and reasonable classroom supports for dyslexia and other related disorders in reading in this 2018-19 school year. The purpose of this agenda item is to provide the Board with information about the district's response to the legislation. And I welcome Jennifer Kreisner to tell us about that.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm happy to be here with you this evening, and as Mrs. Bass mentioned, I'm here to speak with you about our response as a district to the legislation that the state passed a couple of years ago regarding dyslexia screening and intervention. When I started last year in this position, I began working with districts around our area to come up with a response to this, and that's what I wanna talk to you about this evening. In a nutshell, this statute is requiring that we are screening kindergarten students twice a year, and students that are in grades one through three, three times a year. This screening is then followed up with a classroom diagnostic, and students are then given interventions. We are screening for areas that are, show characteristics of dyslexia within reading, but really what we're doing is we're looking at this as an option to get additional data on our students that have deficiencies in reading, and then provide interventions to them that are very targeted in the areas that they need. What is dyslexia? Dyslexia isn't just seeing letters backwards, it's a specific learning disability that's really neurobiological in origin. It's characterized by difficulties with accurate and/or fluent word recognition, by poor spelling and decoding abilities. In FFSD, we have a universal screener, and then we have a classroom screener. The universal screener is STAR. Students were already taking STAR and STAR Early Lit, and so we captured that data, and from there, we said anyone who fell in a certain category would then be given our classroom screener. The classroom screener screens for specific components of phonological awareness, phonics, fluency, and comprehension. And depending on where the students fall in that screener, we're providing very targeted intervention. I put together a screener, and then our wonderful IT department took that information and created an app. And so our teachers are able to quickly screen our students. We capture that data automatically, it spits out a report to them, and then they know what interventions to provide. And I provided resources for them on those interventions as well. Another component of this statute is that we provide professional development to every certified teacher in our district. And so at the very beginning of the school year, in our very first professional development day, we provided two hours of PD to all certified staff, and it covered the components of this dyslexia statute, but most importantly, it covered ways that they can identify students that are having difficulties in reading, and ways that they can provide interventions for students. In PD, the majority of the PD plan was really focused on elementary, because we really wanna capture those students early. And so these teachers took part in a dyslexia simulation, they learned about the statute, and we talked about classroom interventions and instruction that they can do. In terms of screening the students, we knew that this would be a heavy lift for our teachers at the beginning of the year. And so myself and the ISLs across the district worked together, and we've been going across all elementary schools and screening all the students that needed screening for this first time around. I brought every teacher alongside of me as we were doing this process and trained them in it as well, so they received two touches on the PD on how to do this. And then in January, they will do this on their own with the students. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there any discussion?
I just wanted to say, as a reading specialist in a neighboring district, I feel the heat of all of this, you know, an initiative from the state that comes with no extra funding, and I just wanna tell you that you're doing a great job, because I have friends that teach all over, and it sounds like Ferguson-Florissant was the pioneer in this, so.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I also will add to that, so in instructional cabinet, Jen presented this data, and I personally, 'cause I'm not a reading person or trained to teach reading, but dyslexia, dyslexia, sometimes I think people have an unclear understanding of what it is. 'Cause when I first hear it, I think of kids reading words backwards. It's much more broad than that, right? But she's done a yeoman's job at creating those tools, you know, principals are singing praises around the work that's being done. What excites me is when we can help a child from where they are, right? Like, it's not enough for kids to make their grade. They gotta have skills, right? Like, in their head. They gotta be smart, and we have to know what they need, and this gives us the tools to give them what they need, so they can read well and write well and do math well. So I wanna just acknowledge Jen and give her a round of applause for that work.
Thank you, Jen. We will now have Mr. Bills and Mr. Brown discuss the middle school athletic program.
Good evening, Board President, Superintendent and Board, and Ferguson-Florissant family. I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Brown, who has really spearheaded our effort in the middle school athletic program, so we're just very, very proud of the work that he's done and all the achievements that our students have received in this program. So, Mr. Brown?
Good evening. Good evening to Dr. Davis and the Board for allowing me to talk to you briefly about the middle school athletics analysis that we did last year. The vision that I've adopted through Dr. Davis's guidance and through Gary Bill's guidance will align with the district's mission and vision as it, as we go to, I mean, as not only an innovative, innovative, innovative leader, innovative leader, excuse me, in education, but also a trendsetter in athletics in the state of Missouri. As we know, the state of Missouri does not have middle school athletics in a governing form, so we are trying to and will adopt that here for the school district. Under the direction of Dr. Davis and Gary Bills, we were awarded thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty, thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and sixty cents. thirty-one thousand seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and sixty cents by the J.J. Watt Foundation. The J.J. Watt Foundation is recognized for its efforts in championing youth sport initiatives and also it provides national recognition for school districts like ours in developing after-school athletic programs. The criteria for the grant is that it must, it must have met and served grades six through eight. It needs, it had the need for the seed money to purchase new uniforms and equipment, which we did, and a strategic plan for athletic staff, transportation and facilities for competitive and comprehensive athletic programs, which we have all three. The impact of athletics for, for middle school, it will align with the district's future restructuring vision. Athletics will build both athletic and academic stamina along with time management skills, which support ninety-minute block scheduling. Nothing unites a community more than vigorous athletic programming. And the research indicates that student athletes participating in sport, sport programs perform higher academically, have fewer discipline issues and increased attendance. The variables that we use for this analysis were attendance, discipline and academic progress. The attendance that we had here for our general student population was ninety-three point two percent. Our student athlete population, their attendance was ninety-seven point one percent. Dr. Davis charged me with looking at the data for discipline because we want to make sure and Gary Bill's efforts to lower those. So, we had a total of five thousand seven hundred and thirty-four referrals. And out of those referrals, only zero point zero three percent of those referrals were student athletes, which translates into less than one percent of all referrals were student athletes. Let me say that one more time. Less than one percent of all referrals were our student athletes. The biggest part, obviously, is the academic piece. Our general student population, the GPA, was two point three nine. Our student athlete GPA was two point eight three on average with our student athletes, which attributed to the academic progress efforts of our coaching staff with their progress reports and their study halls. We did have a first annual Ferguson-Floreson relays. There was outstanding participation by our student athletes. Cross Key, the Cross Keys Cougars were our champion. We did have great media coverage by KMOX eleven twenty AM. They came out and did interviews and then KMOV Channel Four gave us coverage on the event as well. But the most surprising thing for me was that we had a hundred and twenty-five family, community members, friends that came out and watched our middle school student athletes. These are your middle school athletes for our Ferguson-Floreson Athletic Program. Cross Keys, Berkeley Middle and Ferguson Middle. Each one of these students was so proud to wear their uniform and embossed on their uniform on the back is the logo for J.J. Watt and his foundation. And now, I'll turn it over to, back to Gary Bills, our district athletic director.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. I just want to say that, you know, for me, being a former athlete, it's extremely important and we know the importance of a healthy body as well as a healthy mind. So, you know, in closing, what I would like to say is I want to, you know, first of all, thank all the athletes. I'm sorry we didn't have any of them here today. They could give you personal testimonies to how well they work in the middle school athletic program. So, we humbly ask the board to approve this measure for the middle school athletic program. So, I want to thank you in advance.
May I get a recommendation?
I excitedly recommend that we do this.
You have three seconds? May I get, may need discussion?
What sports are we, is it just track or are we doing, going to do?
No, ma'am. In the fall, we have flag football, we have volleyball and we have soccer for boys. And the winter, we have boys and girls basketball. And in the spring, we have girls soccer and we have boys and girls track. And looking as we, as this is sustainable and successful, we're looking to add like baseball and softball and wrestling and all those things to have a very comprehensive athletics program that as Dr. Davis talks about feeding and instruction, we want to feed and athletics to keep our kids here and not have them go to the Lutheran Norths and the CBCs and the Shaminods and things like that, to keep our best and brightest athletes here and then get them scholarships so that we can, they can go to college and do the things that Dr. Davis has talked about since I've been here for the last four years.
That's wonderful because I've always said that they can't learn by osmosis and we put them right into high school. Thankfully, the C Y C programs have really been supporting ours and I'm glad that we're going to have our own programs. I have one more question and that is, who will our students be playing against?
That was my question.
We, we are a part of the middle school instructional league. It is run by Ms. Allison Todd, who is the athletic director at MICDS. It is our version of Misha. They are, and it's all school districts in the greater metropolitan area, north, south and west, east and west. So, there's probably over one hundred schools in the school, neighboring school districts that participate. And our season begins September the seventeenth and we are fully ready to go with soccer, volleyball and flag football.
Do you send me a schedule?
Yes, indeed.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
I am so excited.
It will be on the website, right?
Yes, ma'am. We'll, we'll work, we'll work with the communications department who's done a wonderful job for us in helping us do all these things and get all these things out. Ms. Anya Hollerman came and took the photos last spring and they're doing a wonderful job for us.
Yeah, I got to add quickly because I want you to connect the dots. Because one of the first things I heard when I got here was discipline, 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 right? And what I asked him to do was to get that data together to talk about the students. Now, this is middle school and it's a small sample, but it's indicative, right? And almost generalizable, right? That our children, especially at the middle school level, because that's where those problems begin, is our kids don't have anything to do after school.
Yes.
They're in the community and next thing you know, they're fighting or getting in trouble and doing some other things and we need to get our kids more engaged early on. And we just wait and that middle school piece is really important. And not having a middle school athletic program, I think, is not to our benefit. It's to our benefit to give our children some organized things to do and be proactive instead of reactive to supporting them. So, I just want to connect that dot because that, because the discipline data speaks to it, the academic data speaks to it, the attendance data speaks to it. And this is just the beginning of something we hope will spread even more throughout our entire community. So, I just wanted to say that.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, I know. Just trying to see if anybody else had any more comments. All right, all in favor, can I hit a for aye?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? We have a new athletic program. We will now have Terry O'Neil and Dan Bimmerman come talk about our active shooter drill that occurred on August twenty-ninth.
Good evening, Board. Thanks for having us this evening. We're talking about something that we had a really great event. This is our after-action report for the active shooter drill. Dan's going to give you a little information, just kind of give us some data of, about the event.
On August twenty-ninth of this year, at McClure South Berkeley High School, we presented an all-staff and all-student participation in an active shooter drill and training and drill. During this, there was sixteen certified four E instructors and we'll, we'll tell you about that a little bit later. We'll explain the four E, their educate, evade, escape and engage. Other participants were Florissant Police Department, Ferguson Police Department, Berkeley P D, Calvern and Park P D and numerous district administrators. To continue, twenty-six additional district staff and administrators assisted the instructors with the, with the students. In total, twenty-nine teachers and three hundred and thirty-three students participated in this training and drill. Additionally, Ferguson Fire Department and Christian ambulance, their EMTs and paramedics were, were available all, all day. To start off, I'll give you an agenda of what we did for the day and then we'll break it down, you know, later on in the PowerPoint demonstration, presentation. The students reported to their advisory classes, their respective advisory classes. The teachers took attendance. They were briefed on what was the day's agenda, what was going to happen during the day. A PowerPoint and video presentation was given to the students and staff. They, after that was done, they returned to their respective advisory classes where they asked questions, discussed in their advisory classes, any questions, comments, anything they had with the four E trainers that were available to every class. Then, the all-important lunch. And after that, there was an active trainer drill with scenarios, all the four scenarios, a debriefing of the positives and negatives of those drills and then dismissal.
So, we started out with a PowerPoint video presentation after they had met and taken role. We broke into two groups particularly for, for the purpose of making sure we had some of the younger kids with the older kids. So, we had a ninth and twelfth grade group in the auditorium and then we had the tenth and eleventh group in the cafeteria and did simultaneous presentations of the training for, for the active shooter. Our district-trained four E presenters and the police four E presenters conducted the train using PowerPoints and videos. And I want to mention that our, our train, staff that took this train and did this presentation, you would have thought this is about the thirtieth time they did it and it was their first and they did an excellent job. But the students were, were unbelievable as well. They were very attentive, they engaged, they spoke, asked questions, commented when they were asked to. They just had very good input and very thoughtful questions. After the PowerPoint, training was completed, students and staff went back to their advisement class. I'd also like to mention that Eric Harris and his staff were amazing throughout the day, keeping the kids in order and they did, there was no issues whatsoever with students or staff. We were, it was just unbelievable and I just want to thank that staff where they did an excellent job.
Yes. After each, after each scenario, the, the four E trainers visited every classroom, had conversations, discussions with them. And the trainers asked the students to share and discuss any feelings they had about the training, the videos, any questions or concerns they might have had with it, if they were feeling, you know, what they were feeling. And again, the students, they were very engaged. They asked a lot of questions. It was relayed to Terry and I that a lot of questions were asked, a lot of pertinent questions.
We actually visited a few of the classes ourselves. I went into four classes and the questions they asked were just, they were great. I mean, it was just, it surprised me, the, the questions they asked and how engaged and thoughtful they were about the whole process and that whole day.
Yes. After lunch, the students and teachers went back to their respective classrooms and the, the shooter drills, the scenarios, they began. They, the four E instructors and their assistants then did four, like I said, four separate scenarios. They were communicated via the school's intercom system and coordinated through use of all, everyone had a, all the people present had handheld radios that, you know, kept it pretty seamless.
So, we said we'd talk about this again. So, there was four scenarios based on the training. We wanted to make sure that they covered evade. So, the first one was just to evade only, to lock down. The second was to escape, get away from the person, get out of the building. The third was engaged to, to actually confront the person. The final one was where we really was important because this was a learning experience for, for the staff and students, what would happen in the real situation. So, the fourth one was really the real situation. You decide what you need to do. We've given you the tools, we've given you the four Es. Now, when something happens, we're not going to set it up for you and tell you like the first one, evade only. We're not going to tell you what to do. You've got to make a decision as an individual and as a group and decide what's best to make sure you get out alive. And so, that was the four scenarios. So, the first scenario, as I said, was evade only. So, this was where we just made announcements, said we had an angry irritated person, parent in the, in the building and they were asked to remain in their classroom. In the hallway, the four E trainers walked down the hall. We didn't use any guns because we didn't want to take it at that level. So, they used a drum and a drumstick and made sounds. It sounded pretty realistic from where I was. I was making the announcements. And so, students and staff locked down by using methods they were trained and they did an excellent job. The four E trainers went to every door, checked to see if they could get in, see if they could see in, make sure they had followed all the procedures to be safe. And everyone did a really great job in evading. Each class was then debriefed by the, by the instructors and the aides and reviewed what methods they used and what methods they could have used to make it better.
After that scenario number two took place, the announcement was made that there was an intruder in the, or there was an intruder that entered the building. A few minutes later, it was announced that there was an active shooter, active shooter in progress. Again, the four E, the four E instructors used a drum and a drumsticks to make it sound like shots fired. Didn't want to introduce any, any real guns into the, into the scenario. It, like Terry said, it did a very good job of sounding like gunshots. Students and staff locked down by using the methods that they were taught and they were also given a possibility, you know, that they, if they could escape safely. You know, the, over the intercom, it was told they were in a particular, the shooter might be in a particular portion of the school. If someone else was on the opposite side, they believed that it might have been a better way to escape, to run out and go to safety. Safety zones were set up inside the building so no kids could leave the building. So, you know, they would have left the building in theory, but in practice, we did this. You know, it made for a little more seamless of a, of a drill. After that was done, again, each class was debriefed by the four E instructors, reviewing what methods were used that good and bad. What was a positive, what was negative, were there any concerns, anything like that. Third scenario was, was done after that. That was the engage. Announcement, announcement notified participants that the scenario was underway, but no additional information was given. The four E trainers were in each classroom and acted as some, as like if they were upset and then they acted well like they had a weapon and surprised the individual, the, the students that were in the class. And by that surprise, they saw how the students reacted. Did they, you know, did they do, did they engage them or did they freeze? Basically forced engagement for the people that want, for the students or teachers that wanted to engage. They did use some crumpled up paper as a weapon. So, we didn't, you know, there weren't any computer screens thrown or, you know, any, anything staplers or books. Like I said, it was in theory alone, but it gave the education part of it. Each class, after that was done, each class again was debriefed about the methods that they were trained on and what was good, what was bad, positive, negative, any concerns they had.
And I know we keep repeating that, but it was a really important part of the training that we sat down with them after each one and talked about how it went, what was done well, what wasn't done well, what you could do in the future and what you could do in a true scenario. So, the final scenario was just to use any of the training methods they were given and that was really important. So, we did announce that there was an active shooter in the building and as the four E trainers walked through the hallways with drums making the, the sounds of shots fired, their locations were also announced. So, they would always know where the active shooter was. This gave the participants options based on the location of the shooter. They could decide if due to the location, should they evade and lock down? Could they escape and get away? And in some cases, maybe even have to confront that person, engage. And so, again, with the way it works, some, some escaped, some, some locked down, some engaged. They did everything they were supposed to do. They were amazing that day and, and. do. They were amazing that day and, and so each class, again, we sat down to brief them, review what could've been done, what, what should've been done, some other methods that could've been used, and that was the final one. And they, I was just amazed by how well they did and, and the comments and questions they had at the end were, were very good.
And as with any large task, um, that, that is done, should have a, an after-action briefing and, uh, we will be conducting that action, that after-action meeting, uh, with several of the instructors and the participants, um, as, as soon as I can get that put together. Uh, obviously during that, we'll share information in order to find out what items were successful, what items were not so successful, um, and what we need to improve on or what we need to keep that were good in order for the future training and drills to be, to be more successful, more positive.
Yeah, and just from conversation that day, you know, Dan, we talked a little about, we do, can give you somewhat of an overall assessment of success and, and some things that we want to improve on.
Uh, the successes were the, again, we've harped on it. Uh, the students and staff were, they were phenomenal during the, during the whole day-long, uh, the whole day-long event. Uh, the, the district staff that was trained in, that were assisting the four E instructors, they performed exceptionally well, like, uh, like Terry mentioned earlier. Um, for many of it was their first-time training and it did seem like they had done it multiple times. They just kind of fell right in and did an excellent job. Uh, the, obviously, the four E certified officers did an excellent job also, uh, organizing throughout the day and directing the other people who, how to assist, uh, to, you know, to make it, to streamline it, make it, uh, successful as, as successful as they could. And, uh, that, that, the students and staff performed well based on the training and did everything that the training, most everything that the training told them to do.
So, then, um, we were very fortunate to have the assistance we had in this. It was, it was a large undertaking. It's probably one of the largest ones ever done in the area with, with the three hundred and thirty-three students and all the staff involved. So, we were fortunate to have all the police departments, uh, assisting us as well. As I want to mention, Ferguson Fire Department was onsite and that, uh, Christian EMS was onsite for the entire day, uh, to help us in case there was any issues or problems with any of our students or if anyone would get injured. Um, it was important that no one left or even attempted to leave the building the entire day. Everyone was respectful with that rule. We wanted to make sure everyone was safe and stayed within the building and so that was another success we felt. The, a big success for food staff. They did an excellent job. They fed everybody in the building, including the instructors, the visitors, everybody that was there, EMS, fire, police, and, uh, did an excellent job. We had a lot of options for lunch. We had some downtime where we sat and organized during the lunch period. So, we really appreciated that they took on that extra task for that day and I went back and talked to each one of them. They were just unbelievable. They thanked us and I was thanking them. They said, "Oh, it's what we do. We love it." So, it was, I want to commend them. Everyone was safe the entire day and went home safely at the end of the day, which is the number one thing. That is the most successful thing that we did. Overall, students and staff performed well during the drill. It signifies they learned the training and students, important to them, I'm sure, was they were dismissed on time. So, um, you know, there are, you know, we talk about successes. We also need to talk about improvements and I'm sure we'll talk about some more when we have our after meeting. But, uh, the ones that we already saw is we want to avoid making changes in the schedule to avoid any confusion. Uh, at one part of the day, one of the leaders of the police that were doing the program wanted to change and put an outside escape route and put them outside and, and a lot of the, the teachers there and principal, assistant principal were pretty upset about it because that wasn't in our plan because we wanted the kids inside and safe. So, Dan and I had a little conference, went back and said, "This is not happening." And so, we changed it back. So, one of the things we, we express to them in the future is we want, we need a plan and we need to follow it and don't change it unless we have a discussion about it with, with the entire group that was involved in the planning. So, avoid changes. Um, we found out less time was needed. We had a lot of downtime in between, which we were really fortunate with the kids because they could've been really restless during that downtime, but we had a lot of discussions during that time and they got some time to have lunch and so it really went well. But, I think we could've really compacted it, uh, and saved some time and had, had some more time for the kids to have some class time and some other things. So, also, if possible in the future, we'd like to train our teachers in advance. They were a big help. They learned along with the students, but a couple of them would've been helpful in, in advance. And we learn, and we'll learn more, like I said, after the action, uh, action, after-action meeting. But, overall, it was very successful, especially for its size and I, and I think we had three hundred and thirty-three students that learned a lot that day and I feel confident that if something ever happened there, they'd know what to do.
Thank you gentlemen so much for your detailed overview. Any, um, discussion, questions, feedback?
How soon would this be rolled out to other schools? Would it be this school year or next school year?
Uh, we're gonna work on it for this year. So, that's one of the things we skipped on the slides. Training, the training will be our next step. We'll work to train additional district staff to help us with that training and then we'll have, uh, use our four E staff, administrators, principals, teachers, um, throughout the year, school year, to start doing this in more locations. Uh, the, this will assist us in achieving our goal and presenting active shooter training drills at each school in the future. Um, so, we're, we're working on a schedule. After our after meeting, we'll decide when we feel the next one can be done. We'll work with Dr. Davis and, uh, and figure out when our next ones will be. But, our goal is to move this to throughout the schools, especially the high schools.
And of course, our top priority is to make sure that every student and staff member goes home, uh, safe every single day.
I just want to add that, um, every school was represented in the training. That was intentional. Um, they, we had training before the actual active shooter drill because we know what has happened across this country in the last, since Columbine back in the nineties. And so, what we want is for our, 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 the adults and the students to be prepared, uh, should something happen in any of our schools. And, you know, the sad part is that it's not if it's gonna happen, but where and when in this country. And so, we just gotta be prepared. Because I think as a, a parent, I want to see my son after school every day like every other mom and dad wants to see their child. So, every school was represented and had, and at least one person or more at those, at every campus has gone through the initial training. Our, our aim is to get everybody trained, all the adults and all the students, so that they have tools in case something happens in one, on one of our campuses. Uh, so, I just wanted to say that to the public because we're gonna keep spreading the learning. Um, I, I use one simple question. Uh, do our, uh, folks know what to do in, in the event something happens? And that's what this, uh, aim was about.
And to piggyback off of that, Dr. Davis, the, every single high school has a four E trained trainer who went to train the trainer so they can actually train other people. Every single high school has at least one administrator that has that training.
All right. Thank you. Any more discussion? Thank you. All right. Dan will now give us the strategy for school safety, his annual report.
Uh, I apologize. This is kind of mundane, kind of reading from the paper. I apologize. During the seventeen eighteen school year, uh, Security Department worked with, uh, building administrators to ensure that there was continued emphasis on, uh, student and faculty Students who are, Security Supervisors and I continue to visit, uh, each campus on a regular basis, try to mitigate any issues, uh, before they arise and currently all emergency and crisis plans are up to date from each school. Theft and vandalism, in the reporting period, uh, for the seventeen eighteen school year, there was approximately three thousand and, uh, three thousand and eighty dollars in reported theft and eleven thousand one hundred and fifty-four in reported vandalism in the district. Uh, losses the previous year for vandalism totaled ninety-five thousand four hundred and losses for theft the previous year were fifty-one hundred and forty dollars. This was a decrease of sixty-six percent in theft and a increase, or I'm sorry, a decrease of eight hundred and fifty-five percent in vandalism. However, it was an anomaly the year before, the year before due to three fires at three different schools, which made that ninety-five thousand dollar total, uh, you know, an outlier. So, and security and training, all members of, um, the Security Department are currently, current with their license as required by St. Louis County and all officers are up to date on, uh, nonviolent intervention training. Additionally, the entire security staff attended that four E active shooter training class in the summer of eighteen, as well as attended training for, uh, spontaneous assault defense, handcuffing techniques, control of combative subjects, and chemical agent deployment. Persons trained will be placed on the building-level crisis teams. An additional training for security staff is currently being tra, uh, planned by me. During the seventeen eighteen school year, Ferguson Florissant School District and security staff continued to support, uh, the SROs in each of the three high schools and each of the three middle school buildings. Uh, School Resource Officers made a total of sixty-two arrests during the seventeen eighteen school year, nine of which were felonies, uh, fifty-three of which were misdemeanors. Uh, there were sixty-three arrests made the prior school year, uh, so you can tell they're very similar. Eleven felony, fifty-two misdemeanors. Uh, obviously very little change when comparing those school years. Um, as just spoken by Terry and I, uh, all, an all-student and staff active shooter training and drill was conducted at McClure South Berkeley High School on the twenty-ninth of August and plans are currently being implemented to conduct these drills at all district schools in the near future. That's all I have.
Thank you so much for your report. Any discussion, concerns, questions, comments?
I, I do. Um, of the arrests that were made, um, like the nine felony, were these felonies committed in our schools or were these felonies committed outside?
In, in the schools.
These were, so all of these numbers are incidents that happened within our school building?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Just real quick question. I was kind of looking at the, um, their presentation. How do you track the trends or really look at, um, the, what's going on in each of the schools? Because I just noticed that some schools have more incidents than others. So, or is there any interventions that you do for those schools?
Tracking, like tracking the trends of arrests or like what's going on?
What's going on? Like, um, I mean, I just noticed that some of the schools just have a lot more incidents than others.
I'm, I'm in, I'm in contact probably either daily or every other day with the SROs from the schools. Um, they have an uncanny knack of knowing a lot of these kids, especially the kids that aren't doing, you know, doing the proper thing. Um, they tell me a lot, you know, a lot what's going on, you know, whether those are drug charges or serious assaults or any type of like sex crimes, things like that. The security, my security staff, that, I, I don't know how they know all these kids' names, but they do and I do believe that a lot of these kids are telling, you know, they, they notify security staff of if they see anything, anything that's going on that shouldn't be going on, if kids are doing things that they're not supposed to be and they will in turn notify me. And if it's something that can be hap, that happened at, that can be taken care of at the administrative level, it does like, you know, it happens that way. Or if it's something that needs to go to the police department, I tell the appropriate SRO.
I thought, would that?
We get school board action?
Oh, it is. I'm so sorry. Can I get a recommendation?
Sound good.
All right, discussion. Thank you, Leslie. I missed that.
Sure, everybody hears me. Have you had any, had any way of tracking schools and looking at if one school is reporting a little bit more than others in terms of students who are being arrested? Um, I, this is big for our district, especially if you can look at the data and I haven't had a chance to really look at it thoroughly and just see if there's, if you're seeing more reporting in one area of the district over another. So, how do, how do you, how do you track consistency in what's reported?
Very good question. I can tell you that the lion's share of the arrests, I don't know if it's because of reporting or what I, that I have no idea. That it would be anecdotal to, to tell you that, but I can tell you that the lion's share of the arrests are coming from McClure North and McClure. I don't know if they're getting reported there. I don't know if, uh, the, the kids are telling the officers more or, or if the officers are more astute there. I, I, I don't know. I apologize for not knowing that. That would, it would just be, you know, a summary statement by me, but I can tell you that the lion's share of the arrests are made at McClure and McClure North.
Does matter to me what school, but if it is McClure North or whatever, why so much McClure North? Why not?
I can, I can go, I can go with statistics too. McClure and McClure North have sixteen hundred kids apiece. So, statistically, they're gonna have more.
But you can still...
But I, I agree. Yes, ma'am.
So, I was gonna say, this is more Gary's wheelhouse. Um, and let me, and he's gonna say something about it, but I just want to interject quickly though, um, because we, so when we revised the student expectation code and he meets with them regularly throughout the year and we have several people on the committee and in fact, the last meeting I had, I was, uh, there, I've been a couple of times, but the last one I was there. Um, and the reporting piece is something that, um, has been somewhat of a sticking point because we have so many different, um, ways of sort of describing behavior.
Yes.
And when it's put into the computer, it could be one thing here and one thing there and it could be some inconsistencies. And when you have all these different ways of saying the same thing, it gets confusing about whether or not it's an issue, right? So, that's one of the things that Gary and the expectation committee has been working on to, you know, try to be more simple around or singular around how we define what discipline behaviors are and then how to respond. Now, one of the things that Gary's done a little bit different this year, uh, since we have someone that actually, Mr. Clark was in the hearings, Gary's spending time not only looking at the data and seeing where some of those problems are, but going to the schools, working with principals and assistant principals and leaders in the schools around not only interpreting the policy itself, because that just got revised over a year ago now, but also how they, um, practice that. And that's largely with principals and assistant principals. This summer, at our meeting at the Federal Reserve Room, we spent some time, um, specifically talking about that, specifically talking about incidents and reporting. Uh, Gary has actually put together a video, uh, that can help with some of that, um, uh, work as well. Gary, you want to add to that?
Yeah. When, when you mentioned trends, um, one of the things we're able to do now is because of the data strategists, they're able to actually pull those trends, uh, where they're, you know, where they're occurring, the type of offenses that are occurring, location. So, that really helps us in, in getting ahead and, and getting in front of, you know, where those things might be occurring and then looking at some of the root causes. So, you know, that's been very instrumental, having those data strategists actually pull that particular information, uh, so we can break that down and get to them.
All right. Thank you so much. That was kind of my question as well. Uh, any other discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor of the recommendation?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you for your report, Dan. We will now have, uh, Dr. Boyes, Substitute Personnel Services.
The administration is recommending Education Solutions Services, ESS of Southeast LLC, as a provider of substitute teacher services in the district. ESS is a Knoxville, Tennessee-based corporation and is currently the largest education-focused substitute provider in the pre-K-12 market. The district will be the ESS, ESS's first client in the St. Louis region and will have a dedicated onsite area manager and applicant specialist whose costs are included in their fees. The contract will be renewable for up to three years and will better facilitate the recruitment and retention of qualified substitute teachers, as well as decrease unfilled absence rates. Uh, currently, the cost would be, uh, a factor of one point three, which would lead to a standard substitute cost of one thirty-two sixty a day. Uh, that was under the other finalist, uh, for, uh, the substitute provider, uh, services. Uh, there were five, uh, vendors altogether that, uh, replied to our RFP. Uh, two made the final round and presented, uh, before a committee of four and hands down, ESS, uh, presented itself as the most qualified candidate for these substitute services. Right now, uh, if the board would approve this, implementation, uh, would begin first through planning, uh, starting this fall and we would have, uh, current subs that are in the, guest teachers that are in the, uh, Department of Ferguson Floris, Floris's current substitute pool, they would be... Department of Ferguson Floerson's current substitute pool, they would be switched over to, uh, the ESS pool. Uh, teachers would still have the ability to choose subs, uh, and there would be ongoing training, uh, both onsite and virtual, uh, provided by ESS, uh, in collaboration with the district.
Alrighty, may I get a recommendation? Any discussion? Hearing none. Um, all in favor say aye? Any opposed? It's been approved?
Thank you.
Now, we will have, uh, Philip Boyd and Mr. Leon discuss the organizational health update.
Thank you, Ward. Appreciate this opportunity. Uh, Dr. Davis had asked me to, uh, give you a very brief, uh, report on a set of data that, uh, am I through? Uh, he had asked me to present a, just, just a very brief overview of a set of data uh, that you, uh, may not be aware that was even collected and certainly have not seen the, uh, results from. Uh, and of course, we, we do what we do in organizational health, uh, for one purpose, and that is to improve the health of your schools. We measure climate. The way to improve climate by changing and improving culture. So that's our number one priority. And one reason for that, you know, is that, uh, it does relate statistically to student performance. Uh, if you approve our, our plan for the year, we'll collect, uh, data in February. I feel very confident that when that data is collected, be able to come back to you and show you a statistically significant correlation between the health of the individual schools and student performance. Be able to show you how that health relates to, uh, teacher attendance and therefore substitute pay. Be able to show you how that relates to, uh, student attendance and how that relates to dollars that come in from student attendance. I have not done this in any district that I know of, uh, but I feel pretty confident that even with what you're talking about now with student discipline, that'll be able to show you that the health, the climate in the school is related to disciplinary referrals. So, customer satisfaction data. Uh, this, this piece of data, uh, we did not include in the original proposal to you. Uh, and, uh, we did this because we were able to achieve some economies in the budget and was able to provide this set of data. Uh, it is based on, uh, asked Dr. Davis, uh, to give me a, a list of some uh, central office units that he would like to have feedback about from principals. So we surveyed using the customer satisfaction survey, uh, the, the offices and units in your central office of the chief academic officer, human resources, finance, and the three area superintendents. We used the survey of direct reports. So, so the principals that they supervise reported directly to them individually. Whereas for the customer satisfaction pieces, all twenty-four principals responded to each of the central office units as customers. So what you see, uh, the, the, uh, instructions here for the customer satisfaction survey, the principals were asked the following questions relate to various aspects of your working relationship with an administrative unit that provides services for you, your colleagues and/or your admin unit. When the term leader is used, it refers to, so we identified if it was HR for Dr. Boyd. And when the term personnel is used, it refers to individuals within the units. So they responded to this survey, these fifty questions from the perspective of, as a customer, how effective is this central office unit providing services to us? Uh, just for example, here, here is a question. The influence we have with this unit is sufficient. So principals would respond from strongly agree, agree, undecided, disagree, strongly disagree in terms of their perspec- uh, perspective about that question on that survey for that unit. Uh, questions such as personnel in this unit solicit input from us prior to making changes that impact us. So this survey then resulted in sets of data. Uh, met with each of the leaders of these areas, we have interpreted the data. We have made some recommendations, some suggestions collaboratively about how to improve whatever the focus dimension was for that central office unit. And I'm not gonna go into any detail about data, but to give you a, a, a big picture. Uh, this is the composite data from all six units, percentile data. So when we get the responses, uh, we take those responses and plug that into our national database uh, and use then the, the norms from that national database to, to see how these units stack up against all other units in that database across the country. So what we see here, on the bottom of this, you see the, horizontally, you see the ten dimensions of health from goal focus to problem solving. On the vertical side, you see the percentile scores of, of, of how they stacked up. So we see from the principal's perspective collectively, as they respond to central office units, that cohesiveness is their highest dimension. Now, we know specifically based upon where that percentile is, what that means in terms of their perspective about collaboration with that unit. Uh, we see, for example, the dimensions of goal focus and power are to the lowest dimensions. Uh, the dimension of goal focus, for example, at that percentile level is, is indicative that principals are saying, we are clear about what the goals are, but we don't own them. They're your goals, not ours. We're clear about them. Look at the dimension of adaptation, uh, which is the, uh, one next to last on the right-hand side. Adaptation is a measure of the individual's ability and willingness to adapt to the expectations that come from central office. So you see that adaptation is one of the higher dimensions here. But I want you to relate that to the dimension of goal focus. See, there's a gap between level of goal focus and adaptation. So it appears that principals are responding to the central office units by saying, we are adapting. We are clear about what is expected of us from you. But there's a gap between what you're expecting of us and our understanding of how that relates to what our goals are. So there is a gap there. Now, once, I'm gonna go back a year, the first year and only year that we have data from schools. This is the two thousand seventeen data from schools. This is teacher data to principals. Look at these two dimensions, goal focus, adaptation. So teachers are, have responded at that time to their principal that adaptation is our lowest dimension. At this time, twenty-one of the twenty-four schools in your district had adaptation as their lowest dimension. I'm suggesting to you that when you go back to what we see from principals to central office here, that there is a somewhat of a disconnect between principals' clarity about what the expectations are for adapting and their connecting of those to what the goals are. Well, to the extent that is true, it appears that the message that many principals give back to teachers, they don't know how to connect them to goals either. So at the school level, you're seeing a disconnect between goals and adaptations. And if it is the case that principals are simply being messengers from central office, coming back to teachers and saying, the central office expects this, they're not connecting them to what the goals are effectively. Okay? So I'm suggesting next steps, this comes from the conferences with the supervisors uh, to encourage them to share the profile data and planning guide strategies for improvement. In other words, principals gave them this feedback, therefore principals need to hear what their collective and composite responses were. So we're asking that, that the central office supervisors meet with principals during a principal's meeting, share the data. Here's what you said to us. And to engage principals in a conversation, a dialogue about what can we do to improve. So I've suggested to them to get principals' feedback. Questions such as, ask, ask principals, who do you go to for what concerns within this department? Do you know what the org chart roles responsibilities within this department are? So the principals know who to go to for what concerns. A question such as, what are the recurring problems you have with our unit? How are the decisions in this unit communicated to you? Communication's a key with that. And what structures and systems need to change to get this unit out of the red zone? So we're encouraging principals to, uh, I mean, supervisors to go back to principals, get feedback from principals, get, get their perspective. What can we do together to improve, to improve communications, to improve connections between what central office expects and what the goals of the district are and how those connect with school goals? And to share that, the final planning guide back with principals, get their feedback, complete the planning guy strategies, give that back to principals with a commitment that here's what we're gonna work on to improve this. Uh, the organizational plan for two thousand eighteen nineteen, uh, I have given a six-page document that details this uh, to Dr. Davis specifically, you know, for what activities will be engaged here. So this is just a very general uh, picture of what, of what's being proposed. Uh, to collect data in February. Uh, principals have been working, uh, since we did the last conferences with them last spring. Each principal received a planning guide of strategies focused on improving goal focus, focused on improving the connection with goal focus and adaptation. I fully expect to see positive results from that. I'm very much aware of what your supervisors have done in working directly with principals, uh, in implementing that, uh, in getting more, not just clarity about goals, but consensus about goals. The overview of report, I will come back to you after data is collected. Uh, we'll collect data during that timeframe for schools. We wanna collect data as we did last year from board. We wanna collect data from central office. We want the customer satisfaction data. Uh, so the data collection will be very comprehensive. And then come back in March then with the overall report for each of those data sets. And then begin the conferences, uh, with supervisors, with principals, uh, in March. Give them time to reflect on the data, come back then, uh, with the longer conferences, the strategy conferences and item number four, for, but their, for developing their plan. Now, we're doing our very best to connect those plans with existing structures in your school. Every principal's plan has a building improvement plan that's related to the elements in the campus building improvement document. And same thing with the principal's professional development plan. And then training sessions in May and to begin then the, uh, improvement, uh, implementation. So question. I asked this question in the training session, uh, in, in April. And we had training sessions in April, two days for each of the areas. So we brought in the principal and teacher leaders from every school engaging in these. The question is, do you have a system of schools or a school system? And how do we transition from a system of schools to a school system? And so I asked the question, you have one district, what? United, okay? They knew that. Generally speaking, the response was positive. They knew that. But when I ask them then, what does a U stand for? Very few knew, didn't know that. Okay? Now, I'm relatively certain that anyone who can read in this district knows that today. For one reason, Kevin took it upon himself after he saw this, he made posters that are put everywhere that I've been about one district united and what it means. I look on the screen, I see one district united. I see the N, the, the U, the N, what it means. Uh, I fully expected today when I walked into the men's room to see a poster in the men's room that he'd put there. So folks know what that means. Now, now here's what they didn't know. They didn't know, for example, they knew that U means understanding. Understanding deals with understanding what? Accreditation achievement. But that's not the goal. Here's the goal. So under each one of these, it's critical that every person, central office, schools, teachers, understand what are the standards, what are the measures in each one of these? Whether it's for networking, infrastructure, economics, decorum. Now, what we do, we met, health measures climate in a school. If we want to improve climate, it means changing the culture of the district, of the school. Culture is who we are. It's what we believe. And what we, what we believe drives our behaviors, what we do. So we have one district, what? United. United, I suggest to you, in purpose, in plan, in passion. Questions, comments?
Uh, may I have a recommendation first to approve the next phase of the organizational health? Any discussion?
I'm sorry? Oh, that, yes, yes, ma'am. That's related to the dimension of goal focus. Okay? That's, that is related to the dimension of goal focus. Uh, how to get passion in goals is through involvement of people with developing those goals. If I have had voice in developing the goals, I'm much more likely to have passion to work to implement those goals. So it comes through that dimension and the efforts to increase that. Yes, ma'am? I'm sorry?
Sorry. This is phase three that we're going into?
I didn't label it as a pha- it, it's just a complete cycle. Now, last year, we broke it down by phase one, phase two. So yes, ma'am, this could be, say, that's phase three.
How many phases are there?
Good question. That will depend upon how effectively the changes are made. Okay? Uh, now, what, what we, what we do i- is there is a, an annual plan. So there is no other phase this next year. This is the plan for next year. Okay? It's not a phase. In other words, it's the plan for two thousand eighteen nineteen.
So I guess my question is, how much longer, I mean, how many years will this take to get all the information that we need for us to...
That is totally your decision, ma'am. Uh, when, when we come back to you with, uh, with the growth we expect, it will change what we do. Okay? Uh, part of my responsibility is to build capacity within your leaders. And in other words, my job is work myself out of a job by building capacity so that your supervisors can be the ones that do the conferences. Okay? That someone can be trained or more than one person trained to do the training in the district. Okay? Now, you will always depend on us for data. But as far as the implementation piece of this, as we build capacity in your leaders to do these things, then you take over those responsibilities.
What is usually, usually, and I know this may be a difficult question, your average amount of time that you spend in a district?
We have, well, our longest district right now is thirty-three years. But, uh, they use us as a data source. So after a half a dozen years or so, it is typical that, uh, they are able to take responsibility and, and do the implementation pieces themselves within their own resources. But again, it varies depending upon how much fidelity is there in doing this to start with? Okay? How much support is there for this? Uh, and how effectively, uh, do we accomplish what these recommendations say? It varies from place to place. It can be faster. It is faster in some than others. Say it that way.
Um, I just have a quick question. What is our end goal?
Your end goal as far as health is concerned, look at that bar graph. The goal for every school, every central office unit is to have those as high as possible and as balanced as possible. When you, when, when you get there, you'll see the results that you want. You'll see the needle move on student performance when that happens.
So as a district, and I guess this will be more to, uh, Dr. Boyd and Dr. Davis, what is our, what are we, what is the, what are we trying to reach for?
Yeah, so, um, you know, mainly, uh, I'll use a word, morale. And that's an often, a word we often hear about in our, our schools, uh, when I'm having conversations with teachers or whomever it may be. And, you know, for example, the most recent data we got that, um, Dr. McLean and I sat down and talked through was data, uh, around the various departments in our district and how principals view various departments. Well, having the data is one piece. It's what you do with the data that is the really powerful parts, right? It's what you do with the data that is the really powerful parts, right? So, you know, when principals talk about the finance department, for example, and that's Laura Medrusik's work and the people who work on her team. So how do they view that department? And once they get there, then there's some work that has to be done with Laura. There's some needs for improvement, or things that need to be changed in order to, you know, make sure that people are really clear about what our goals are and how finance impacts that. Then what you want is for everybody to be on the same page and morale is up and so everybody is, the culture is good. Now, the problem comes when you have changeover, right? Like, that often is the issue if you have new leadership in a school, for example, or new leader in a department. And those things happen all the time because that's just the way humans are, right? So what you're after is that everybody really is improving the climate and culture in our schools, largely in our schools, more so than the departments, while we support them. But it's really about what's happening with principals and teachers and students in schools.
It's also about putting systems in place so that regardless who is in those positions, they work through a system that will sustain success.
So, I'll just say quickly, though, that, you know, and probably some of the assistants who supervise principals can speak to it better than me, but, you know, what I can tell you is that when you get that data, when you have a school who has a principal, and a principal does a survey about how they feel like people see them as the leader of the school, and then you have that same group of folks who they lead that give you some data, answering the same kinds of questions, and you have principals thinking, oh, they love me, but then they're actually saying, I don't like them, you know? And so when there's a gap, what do you do with that gap, right? And that work that happens in between is what you want is people to be on the same page. So that principals feel this way, because sometimes we're looking in a mirror in ourselves but not really seeing how other people see us as leaders. So how do you change that behavior which improves that culture? Because when teachers and principals in particular are thinking the same things, they're on the same page, then what happens is adults are happy and doing what's good for children. And children are the ones who are the beneficiaries of it, right? And that's the hard piece. I wish I could do it overnight. Like, I wish I could give everybody a quick glass of water and it would change.
I would too. But as a board member, I want to make sure that we are being fiscally, you know, doing the right thing. And I know that it's important for us to keep that data. And as you said, that there's a lot of changes that go on in the district. We could keep doing this for year after year after year. And that's why my question, so when does this, when does this fiscally?
Yeah. So, you know, typically, and I'll say this, and I'll refer to the work we had done with TLC, you know, three to five years is always a good implementation phase when you want to try and do new initiatives. You don't do something forever, because what you want is to build capacity so people can do it themselves, right? And that's always what we're after is, how do we train up and make sure our people have the skills they need so that they can run on their own instead of somebody always being there with you?
That is our end goal.
Yeah.
So that's why I wanted to kind of put a number with or timeframe with this and how long we will need that support. Because it is very expensive.
Oh, yeah.
And something I really encourage you to consider. I know this sounds like a sales piece. It is more of an investment than an expense.
Yeah, that sounds like a sales pitch, but yeah.
Yeah, but I hear you, okay? But I'm very confident, as we have done in every district that we work with, when I show you the difference in what you're paying for subs for your healthy schools compared with the unhealthy schools, that difference in subpay will pay for our contract.
Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Two ayes.
Two ayes. Okay, it still carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Medrusik? We'll talk about the tax shelter savings program.
Good evening, board. I'm going to make this fast. I've got a lot of slides, but I'm going to go through them quickly. You remember Carlton Brooks, he's our director of finance, and he's going to assist me with this. The district offers a voluntary tax sheltered retirement savings plan, and it really is a retirement savings plan. So what our employees invest in are 403Bs or 457 tax instruments. And basically, you can't take that money out until, with a 403B, you can't take that out until you're 59 and a half. Or if you do contribute to a 457, if you have severance of employment, you can take your money at that time. But this is truly supposed to be a retirement savings plan, and it's a pre-tax plan. So we do currently offer this plan. We have several, as you can see, we have several providers and of the, and we offer this to all employees, whether you're part-time or full-time. All employees, by law, we are required to offer it to all groups. We choose to offer it to all groups, but we're supposed to offer it every year by law. We have 344 participants, and that's like 21% of the whole district that participates. As you can see, AXA Equitable has the largest amount of participants, and that's because they had a really great vendor. The vendor that was here was with us for a very long time. She was actually someone I depended on for the tax compliance issues, and so she did a really great job of drumming up business. She didn't like the way AXA was going, so she left and went to another broker. So she's no longer with us, but she's the reason that there were so many people that went with AXA. There are several, I want to give you some historical information about 403Bs and 457s. There were changes in the IRS regulations back in 2008, and at that time, these plans became really difficult to administer. We were required to provide a written plan document, which included everything about why we do these, who can do it, what types of things we offer, how you can take loans, how you can take hardship withdrawals. We also were required to gather information sharing agreements between vendors. So if someone takes a loan, for instance, I used to contribute to two. I had GreatWest and I had AXA. And so if I took a loan, then the administrator has to contact both AXA and, because you can only take so much out, IRS says that you're only allowed to take out so much in a loan or so much in a hardship. So the information sharing agreements between the vendors said that I would have to contact AXA and I would have to contact GreatWest, and they would both have to say, she's not taking a loan with us. And so that gave us the ability to talk to both vendors. There's also stricter rules that came with this IRS legislation for the loans and the hardship withdrawals. I have to sign off on all the loans and hardship withdrawals as a district representative because this money theoretically is not really, it's the employee, the district owns these plans. This is a voluntary benefit. So at the time that these changes came along, we kind of looked at a gatekeeper program for them to do the third-party administration, but it was going to be very costly and it was a voluntary program. So we decided to, since I had that great vendor, that she was going to help me administer and that we were going to just do it ourselves and save the district money. At about that same time, the CSD trust was established because of this issue. And so they were established by educators to have this trust. And it started in 2009, and I did not choose to move to the trust at that time because we did have some really great vendors. We had some great vendors with MetLife, we had a great, Carl Reed was with us with Horace Mann. We had some really longtime vendors that we had that I trusted and that I believed in. And so I decided just to continue to stay with the district or with us and not move to the trust. However, there have been, the last couple of years, there's been a lot of changes in this industry. Our trusted vendors are no longer with us, the Horace Mann representative has retired, MetLife has sold their, they don't want to deal with 403Bs because it's just really hard to manage, it's very regulated. And so they're getting out of the business, so they moved their book of business to Mass Mutual. So we've had a lot of turnover with a lot of different advisors over the last few years. I've had a hard time keeping control of that because we never really know who our advisor is. So at one time, well, you all know that there was one issue because you all received a letter about one that I had to, and with that issue, I had a hard time finding someone that I could report that to because the person that had been their supervisor was no longer with them. So then I had to try to find, it's been very difficult, not only for the finance office, but also for our employees. So they would call and say, who's my rep? I'm with whomever. And I'd say, sorry, I really don't know, you know? And then we'd have to track down who the rep was. It's just been a kind of a re-docking door. So frustration from the employees and frustration from our side, from finance, we decided that it was time that we need to look into making a change. So we looked towards the CSD trust. Now, by this time, they've been in business since 2010, and they really, really, really grew their business. Like I said, the trust was created for educators, by educators, and it was for educators. And it's actually grown into a really, really great retirement program. The trust is a consortium of school districts and charters, and because they've grown so much, they've been able to lower their fees over the years. They also help you with the regulations. And so they would take over that administrative piece so that we don't have to worry about all the rules and regulations. We don't have the multiple vendors with them, there's a single provider, and so we don't have to have all those regulations with the trust. Here's a list of all of the different school districts in the Metropolitan area, there's 34 around us. Actually, I think the only ones that aren't on there are Riverview and Normandy. So one of the pluses with this, by moving into this, is if we had new teachers, they could move, and they had a 403B with another district, they would not have to change their plan. Because other, in the past, or like as we are right now, if you've got an advisor with another company, I was not allowing any new companies to come in because of all the regulations and having to keep track of all the information sharing agreements, they would have to stop their annuity and start with somebody else. So this way, it's a seamless transition for new employees or, heaven forbid, somebody go to a different district, they could also take it with them because all these school districts do participate. They've also expanded to Kansas City area and to Wisconsin. So they're continually trying to grow their business. And so the reason that this single trust provider is so, does such a good job is that you have a consistent communication to all participants. We only have one vendor that we can communicate with. I know exactly who to call, the employees know exactly who to call. The financial advisors are not dropping in unannounced. I had an issue with a financial advisor sending an email at a time that I asked them not to go into the schools. I said, it's testing time, please don't visit our schools right now, the teachers really don't have time to deal with you. And this advisor went ahead and sent an email out on our email, trying to set up appointments. And I have no control over that. So with this advisor, I have one advisor that I can contact. And then again, they will help with our administrative compliance and help me make sure that we are following the IRS rules, which is extremely important, because if we don't, then we could lose our tax exempt status and those employees would no longer have tax exempt status for that. The trust, when it was established back in 2009, went through an extensive RFP proposal, and they went again out in 14 and 15. So because they've grown so much, they've had a bigger buying power, they were able to negotiate very low prices. So because there's so many people in this trust, they're continuing to keep their wages low and they will continue to go out for RFPs to make sure that they do ensure low fees. So this slide right here shows from the inception of January 2010, they had $0 in the assets, and they've grown it to 143.7 million. And their fees have decreased dramatically. So if you had $10,000 in account back in 2010, it would cost you $140 in fees, it now costs $52. So as you can see, the more money that goes into this fund, the less your fees are going to be. The benefits are that they do provide a lot of investment options. The fees are low because we have so many people that participate. And they do offer the 403, the 457, but they also offer additional program that we don't offer because it's also very hard to manage, and that's the Roth IRA. So this would be an additional benefit to our participants. Because if you're not making a lot of money and you don't need that tax benefit, a Roth IRA is really a really good option to go. I actually had a Roth IRA outside with another advisor, and it really, it helped me with my kid's college. So that was, it is a good, good for young families. This is just, they offer a wide variety, so if you want to take a lot of risks, they have a high risk. And if you want to be very, like, I'm older and I need to be really cautious with what I do my investments with. So they have a lower stable, more valued. They do invest in Vanguard, which is one of the, has one of the lower fees. And so that's the reason they're able to keep their fees lower and because we have so many people that participate in it. And so I wanted to give you an example because you say, you know, well, who cares if they have higher fees? And a lot of times, you don't even see the fees. I did some investigating while I was doing this, and I was just appalled at how much fees I was actually paying. So if two employees have $20,000 of an nest egg, they're both 40, they're both going to retire in 20 years, and their portfolios are growing by seven and a half percent per year on average, which we would think that was great, but it's not really happening right now. But this is just a sample. But the fees that one employee is paying is 1% less in assets than the other. So the impact is that the employee whose fees are 1% lower is putting $13,000 more into their account than the, so just 1% of a difference is $13,000 in this scenario. And then I went and looked at a different scenario where two employees were contributing $7,500 per year for 40 years. They started right when they got here and they've been contributing their whole time. And so they've been able to contribute $300,000. And that has earned $1 million. The person that paid one and a half percent in fees actually pays, earns less, $308,000 less than one that only paid, you know, 50% in fees. So it really does add up, the more money you have, the more money you save. So it is very important for us to consider these low fees whenever we're considering what we're doing with our employees.
I do want to say one thing, too. The scenarios that Laura has drafted really are pretty good ones, but, you know, you can put in iterations of this. I mean, we really are seeing that with some of the vendors, they're charging much more than just a 1% more, okay? They may be 2% or 3% more. So if you were to extrapolate that and build that into these computations, you see a huge variance in savings that we're trying to bring to our staff here.
And so, thank you, Carlton. And along with those fees, they have full disclosure on their statements. So right now, I don't see what my fees are with my statements that I get. The trust does write out what, you know, what all the fees are so that you can see, so that they are transparent with what they charge. There are no sales commissions, there's no surrender charges, there's no annuity charges. They've been able, Valick has been able to negotiate that because they have such a large population of people and money, so they've been able to negotiate those fees away. They can transfer funds into the retirement system at no cost, so that's always a good benefit. They do offer a really good platform, and it's priced out at an institutional price, not a retail price, and that's very important. This was something that I found really impressive is they have, so every district that's in this trust has a representative that goes to a meeting. But then within that, those representatives, then they have a committee, an investment committee, and every quarter, they go and they have the meetings with CBIS and with Valick, and they look at every single fund and what those funds are doing. And they watch those. And so if a fund's not doing well, then they decide, are they going to keep that fund? So someone is actually, someone that we know is actually going and watching these funds and making sure that they're really doing what they're supposed to do. And if they're not doing well, then they're going to talk about it and watch it, and then they might have to pull it off. Over those years, they've only had to pull off two funds. But we actually do, it made me feel better to know that someone was actually watching it with the other companies, we don't know who's watching it. And again, so the financial advisors are not trying to make money on their products. They're paid and they're just there to help make sure that we're getting the best product that we can. So we did have two meetings with our employees, and the biggest concern that we saw was that, you know, people like me and everybody has money in their original tax sheltered account. So they wondered, you know, what's going to happen with the money that's in their account? Well, they have several options. They can keep their funds where they are. They don't have to move, they can still deal with their own financial representative. They are not required to roll those funds over to Valick. Another option would be to start the fund with Valick, and then at the end, when they do retire, they can roll those funds back over to their original account. So those funds can go back to the original account. And are there fees for rolling it back to, from? So there are no fees rolling it back to their original account from this trust. Also, you can roll your funds into Valick, and that's what I did whenever I moved from GreatWest to AXA. I waited seven years. So after a seven-year period, you can roll over without fees for many of your companies. So I, when I moved from GreatWest to AXA, I was able to wait seven years and then roll over my funds without fees. Now, sometimes it might be a case where you can just roll over your money, and the savings that you get from not paying the fees are going to outweigh the service fee that you would if you wanted to roll it over. So those were some options for the employees that wondered what would happen to the money that was in their account. The other feedback that we got was they wanted to continue to work with their financial advisor. Some have great advisors. One person came with their financial advisor to one of our meetings, and they can still keep their advisors. So Valick will give them a code to go online and to work on their accounts, and they will, and if you give Valick permission to deal with your financial advisor, they will deal with them too. So you can still continue to work with your financial advisor, there's no reason why you couldn't still continue to work with them. We did have some good feedback also. So the lady that brought her financial advisor, he sat through the meeting with a mean old scowl on his face the whole time. I mean, he was like, I was afraid of him, I didn't know who he was, and he looked really mad. And at the end of the meeting, he came up to me and said, this is a great plan, I really, the little fees are really, these are really great products. And he said, I really hope that you guys do this. And then the other was the AXA rep that I so much depended on. And then the other was the AXA rep that I so much depended on, that loved us long ago, a few years ago. She, we, I talked to her, and she said she couldn't believe it took us so long to move over, that this is really a good plan. So we did have some good feedback from, and then I had some people that, at the meeting, that said, we can't wait. When can we start? You know, we, we're really interested in the low fees. So anyway, um, we did have these meetings, and I wanted to talk to you about what the feedback was. If you have any questions, I'll ask that Steve Kaiser from the trust is here tonight, and if he can come up, he can answer any questions that you might have. But we are requesting that, that we seek, we're seeking approval to use the CSD trust as a sole source tax sheltered savings plan for our voluntary tax sheltered plan.
So may I have a recommendation to approve the CSD trust to be the single provider for our voluntary tax sheltered retirement savings program?
I move.
Any discussions? Questions?
It's pretty straightforward. I mean, it seems like there's a lot more pros and cons, so. And FFNEA is all on board with it, right?
Yes, we've involved the FFNEA as well.
We've been involved or not? Not for it?
Okay. All right, so, um, all in favor? Well? You said you're not for it?
It's in Switzerland. No, we have no.
Oh, okay. I thought you had some specific, okay. All right. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ocean Carries?
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
No problem. Oh, now we have, uh, Larry Leroux and Lori Salma. Uh, we'll be talking about negotiations agreement.
Good evening. As we, uh, brought to you before, uh, over the summer, uh, there were, uh, some changes that, uh, we're consistent with the agreement that we have from negotiations to reorganize the policy book. Uh, that has occurred. Uh, we have, and I think it was presented to you in, uh, your materials, uh, 66 items. Uh, these were, um, references that are now found in the collective bargaining agreement or else deletions because one of the things we were trying to do is to try and make sure that we were ordering, uh, organizing the policy book. Uh, Lori and Jean Stevens did a great job in, uh, going through the book. What you have is, uh, I think, highlighted in yellow, and we're asking, uh, if the board will approve this, then we can go ahead and get a policy book published. Uh, we currently have it, um, online, but we have not printed the books yet. So we ask, uh, for the board's consideration there.
May I have a recommendation to approve the recommended changes to the policies that are presented? Any discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, second? I heard two, okay. All right, any discussion? All right. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
And then the last thing on the agenda, um, on the November 6, 2018 ballot there, uh, and this is basically coming from, um, the Missouri School Board Association. On the November 20, November 6, 2018 ballot, there is an initiative, Proposition D, to raise taxes on motor fuel for the current 17 cents per gallon to 27 cents by July 1st, 2022. They actually talked about it in the MSBA video, so I won't, um, read everything. So basically, MSBA just wants to know what our board thinks and to, uh, find out, um, are we in favor of, um, this tax increase? And so I will just do it by, uh, roll call vote. Okay, so we can, yeah, that's what I'm going to say. So they really didn't ask for a deadline. So we will, uh, get you guys a little bit more information on that. So for right now, we will oppose for voting. No, we was going to just, uh, it was just more, what do you all think? And then we were just going to share it with, uh, MSBA. All right. But if there's no more board, um, business, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much for staying with us to 10:14.